Good evening, all. The Concord Public. Excellent, good, so I will note that the recording is in progress. Your Zoom screen probably told you the same. This is the Concord Public Schools School Committee on June 8th, 2021. And I want to welcome everybody today, especially our CPS retirees. I am a proud CPS and region retiree. So I'm delighted that people are going to join the ranks after all your valuable service. But we're going to get to that in a moment and have Lori and the principals help us through that. I'd like to call for a roll call, please. If you would, Alexa.
Anderson present.
Booth present.
Oh, present, hello.
Mrs. Ed present.
Randy present.
Dr. Hunter.
I'm fairly going to quickly turn this over. We're really excited to honor some of our dedicated teachers who made it through a really challenging year and are headed off to do other things. And it's excellent to have them here tonight and just recognize their years of service and support to the kids of Concord. So I'm going to turn it over to the principals and I thought maybe Angel will start with you.
I'm happy to, hi Karen. So I am pleased to be here tonight to recognize and congratulate Karen Hoyt on her retirement. Karen has been a teacher leader in many areas for many years within the Concord Public Schools. From leading the district-wide K-5 Teacher Mentor-Mentee Program, to pioneering innovation through the integration of technology, Karen could always be counted on to share her wide depth of knowledge with her colleagues. Something unique about Karen's style of teaching is that she always made sure her students were able to make connections between the content that they learned in school and the world around them. Her students didn't just learn about how important the role that bees play in our ecosystem. They actually planted a bee garden just this year in front of the school to protect them. Her students learned about the negative impact plastic waste had on our oceans and use their learning to impact change locally. You may or may not remember the Concord Journal editorial about reducing the use of plastic straws. I wish you health and happiness in your retirement and commend you on your 25 years of service to the children in Concord. Congratulations, Karen.
Thank you, Angel. It's been a privilege to work with this great community and have all the technology and support. And it's been really a great, great time, thank you.
And you are definitely a trailblazer, so kudos to you. Thank you, Karen, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Karen, thank you.
I wish we could really clap here, can we all clap?
Oh, we can. Karen and I spent some time together over a number of years and it was a great pleasure. And I value your commitment greatly and know that, as with every educator, you make a bet on a better future for the kids around you. And you put yourself very wholeheartedly into it with great professionalism, thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Court.
All right, so why don't we switch schools here? Naomi, can I bring it to Alcott?
Yeah, absolutely. Hi, Mary Ann. So I have the pleasure of recognizing Mary Ann Durant, who is an amazing special education teacher at Alcott, who's called the Concord Public Schools her home away from home for 37 years. Though her tenure at Alcott has been long, I myself have only had the privilege of working with her for two brief years, with much of that time marked by the pandemic. However, it didn't take any time at all for me to see what an amazing educator Mary Ann is. I personally feel incredibly fortunate that our paths crossed and that I was able to witness firsthand the impact that she's had on so many children. One of the things that I have been most struck by is Mary Ann's kind and soft-spoken nature. Her calm reassuring demeanor puts both students and adults at ease and enables her to be incredibly effective at what she does. Her students make tremendous gains when they work with her in large part because of how safe and loved they feel in her care. In addition to the amazing work she does with her students, Mary Ann has also been a wonderful, wonderful presence in the greater Alcott community. As the coordinator of the Alcott Sunshine Fund, she's been there for staff in times of joy and times of sadness. I truly couldn't think of a better person to do the important work of supporting staff during times of need than Mary Ann. Mary Ann, I wish you the best of luck on this next journey of yours, though you will be missed tremendously at Alcott. I know that your impact on staff and students will be long-lasting.
Thank you, Naomi. Alcott has been my home for a very, very long time. And I have to say that the Concord Public Schools have been a great system to work for. Over the years, in many years, 37-plus years, whenever I've gone to bat for a child, the child always gets what they need. I have to say that we give, especially special needs kids, we give them what they need. And I've been, I'm really proud to be a part of that and to be, to have worked for the Concord Public Schools for this amount of time. It's a great system, it really is, thank you.
And may I add, as a mentor facilitator over the years, Mary Ann has been a mentor for many years and I was always so happy to see your name on the list, that you would be someone else's mentor, so awesome and congratulations.
Thank you, Karen, I didn't know you were retiring. I was surprised at your face, I was like, whoa.
People will have to make plans.
Thank you.
Great.
Congratulations and well done.
All right, the Concord Middle School, Mr. Cameron.
Hi, good evening. So I have the honor to present two retiring teachers, the first of which joined the ranks of Special Education at the middle school a couple of years ago, after a short stint at the Willard Elementary School. Venus Kane has been such an integral part of the changes that we have brought into place at the middle school in reconfiguring both buildings to one sixth grade building and one seventh and eighth grade building. You know, for the most part, we have taken faculty and staff of about, I want to say there were 19 traveling staff when Lori and I came in about five years ago. And we riddled that down to about four, not including administration. So we have about four traveling teachers and one of them continues to be Venus. And I want to call that out because, you know, about 10 years ago, I had an opportunity to lead some graduate level courses at a satellite campus at a high school. And we used to have, it was one of those programs where we used to have about a 30-minute dinner break. And I had the opportunity to walk around an empty school building. And you really get a sense of care and really a sense of passion and pride of how one sets up their classroom. You get a sense of who that teacher is. And that's the feeling you walk into when you walk into either one of Venus's spaces. And I'll miss the conversations about those spaces and the commitment that came from her entire family especially. And I hope he's listening in, Venus's husband, who took great care in helping to set up that space. You know, from a different old-world time, if Venus needed a unique-sized desk, especially in a world of where we had to distance each other, in just a couple of weeks, you would find a beautiful desk with gorgeous craftsmanship that would be there pretty much center stage for all of Venus's students and for her teaching and learning. Pretty remarkable. And, you know, really reminded me of the relationship that I enjoy, where, you know, education, we come home and we talk about what we do and it's a big part of our family's lives. And sometimes we look over at a partner and be like, do you have a job too? Because it's often our jobs that take that center stage at any dinner table. Venus, I want to thank you on behalf of the entire faculty and staff of middle school for your contributions these last couple of years. And we wish you well. Like many educators, we don't see her slowing down too much, just moving on to the next phase. So Venus, cheers.
Thank you very much. I've been fortunate to spend my last three years of a 38-year career here at Concord. And it's really been a pleasure to work with the staff at Concord, thank you.
We are the beneficiaries, thank you.
And Jane. So Jane and I had a moment about a week ago before the faculty meeting where we had an opportunity to present her with such a lovely tradition in Concord Public Schools of the Rosebush. And she heard then the value and everything that she has brought to Concord and the middle school since the year 2000. You know, interesting to me and both Jane and Venus and all the retiring teachers this evening, you know, a teacher's story, if you ever turn it into a movie, you know, your pretty typical plot outline is the most dramatic or the year that is most remembered. Somewhere on a plot outline should be somewhere in the middle of that career, that middle of that movie or story. And we all know very well that the way in which both Venus and Jane are ending this year is a year to remember, of course. You know, Jane started out as a remote teacher and she quickly taught not only me and her colleagues, though, an opportunity and had a value and really build relationships with students in a remote fashion. But I do recall a conversation. I happened to have the opportunity to lead an enrichment class in the classroom that is Jane Hall's classroom. And I remember connecting with some of her students before. My class was about to start and their eyes became this big when they learned that Jane was returning back in person. And I just remember the joy that they had in the fact that they were going to end the school year with Jane. And that joy has been present throughout since April 26. So Jane, thank you on behalf of faculty and staff at the middle school. You have been so lovely in everything that you brought. And if I say anything more, I might break up a little bit.
Oh, thank you, Justin. Actually, when I first came back after being remote, the first thing a student said to me was, you have a lot more gray hair than I thought. I expected a big welcome, but anyway, I feel very, very fortunate to have taught the kids that I've taught, worked with the colleagues I've worked with and the administration that's been so supportive. And as I leave the system, I think also as a parent, because I've sent four children through this system. And I look at Mary Ann Durant, my son is about to turn 35. And I remember you being one of the teachers thinking, you never taught him, but it's like. So you see, it's a lot of connections and I just have so much love for the system and everything it represents, the resources, the people, the kids are amazing. And I'll miss it a lot, but I've had just a wonderful, wonderful time, so thanks, thank you.
Wow.
Well, Jane, you introduced the word "love" into our conversation, so thank you for that. It is very evident to this school committee that you and your colleagues have not only put immense talent and a good number of years into your work with kids, but you've put all heart into it and kids notice that. Kids respond to that, you know that better than we do, so thank you for that. Heather.
Thank you. Can I also, I wouldn't add forever, but I didn't know Senora Hall was retiring either. And I have to tell you, having had several, a couple of kids, well, two of my kids go through, the word "love" that you point out, Court, is so true. And I have seen it come home and seen how a child all of a sudden loves to go to Spanish class and four years later loves Spanish. And I thank Senora Hall for that because the experience in your classroom was just transformational. So I just had to add that. We've seen the power of your work in my own house and it's moving and wonderful and we thank you.
That makes me so happy, thank you so much.
Okay, not, not, oh, sorry, Court, we have one more when you're ready.
So yes, let's continue on, please.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Kristin to talk on our Ripley retiree who serves all the students of Concord.
So it's my great privilege to honor my friend and colleague Diane Kablick. For the past 15 years, she has served Concord Elementary students as our elementary science specialist. And I just want to point out three big accomplishments, although there are many. Probably most importantly, from the very beginning, Diane identified watershed pillar example activities for students at every grade level in our elementary schools, things that they would experience and remember forever. The boat trip, looking at, seeing Karen Hoyt, a fifth-grade teacher, nod her head for the fifth graders, looking at ocean life and environmentalism, how you do sampling and so forth, looking at raising butterflies from chrysalis in first grade. But probably the most memorable activity that she brought to Concord Public Schools is the work with the Blanding's turtles in grade four. Students raise endangered Blanding's turtles and then re-release them into our wildlife. And that activity, out of all of the activities, K to 12, is the one that seniors, when they're graduating, mention the most as impactful in their education. So that's truly, truly a special activity. The second thing is more academic that I want to mention. In 2016, Massachusetts followed the country in coming out with new science standards. And Diane was pivotal on our committee, K to 12, to move our curriculum into alignment with those standards. We did a really deep dive into everything that we do in science and technology and engineering. And Diane helped recognize that we were super strong in life science, but could do more in physical science. And then we looked around for a curriculum, a published curriculum that could help us there and still be true to our belief that hands-on education with elementary students is the best. And after two years of piloting, we chose the FOS curriculum to augment what we do in elementary school already. And Diane was pivotal in setting up all the training, getting us the materials to make that work. So kudos to Diane. And then the last, probably is the best known, definitely one of the most important things that have happened in Concord education during my eight, nine years in Concord, which is the establishment of the Elementary STEAM Innovation Lab at Ripley. So through an eight-member committee, we went out to Worcester Polytech once a month for a long, long time, a year and a half or something, driving out to Worcester. And the eight of us, K to 12, science leaders, did STEAM activities, we learned about STEAM careers, we learned about how to encourage more students of color and females and students with special needs in the STEAM engineering fields of study. And with that, we, one day Diane got the email from the Concord Education Foundation that everybody gets once a year, asking to apply for grants. And I think we got it on a Monday and it was due on a Friday. And that week was a busy week for us. She'd like pulled together this incredible application. And with that seed money of $25,000 and then the building money that we put in, you can all come see the incredible K-5 STEAM Engineering Lab at Ripley. Kids come with their classes twice a year to engage in completely hands-on activities around building solutions to physical problems. And they can range anywhere from building something that can clean up the bottom of the ocean for the ocean life there, all the way to making a prosthesis for a hurt animal. So these activities Diane collected from different places, she created on her own. And the last thing I'll leave you with is that I don't think we've had one kid be absent on the day that they were supposed to come work with Diane in the STEAM lab. So incredible career she has brought to Concord through science and supporting science and environmentalism, something that I think we'll see in our students as they age and grow up for years and years to come. I hope in 20 years, they're going to say, what was going on in Concord 20 years ago that all these great environmentally sensitive engineers came out of there? So Diane, lastly, I just want to say thank you for the friendship. You have been a support, caring about me and our Get Stuff Done team in teaching and learning for all these years. So I can't say I'm sad to see you go because I know you're going to the ocean where you love to snorkel and scuba dive, but I hope to get lots of great pictures. Cheers, my friend.
I'm unmuted. Thank you, my son's here.
Hi, Jesse.
It's, thank you, Kristin, that was very sweet. It's been such a bittersweet year, it's hard to say. And especially now as we wind down. You know, I've been able to go to the schools and work with some kids. In fact, this morning doing Alcott and running into people. And it's just, you know, as the other retirees know, it's very bittersweet. It's, Concord has been such an amazing place to work. And I see people that I have known from the beginning, I see Heather out there and has come with me on several field trips and lots of laughs. And teachers like Karen and I saw Kate is on here. And people have been with me from the beginning and are willing and anxious to pilot different programs. And the support, the support from the administration, from the teachers, from CEF and the community in whole has been so overwhelming throughout the years that it just makes you want to do the best for the kids. And that's one thing that I've always noticed and have always found, that the kids in all our language, in all our terminology, they're always number one, regardless of where we are. And it's just a great place to work and I thank everybody for everything. Not one of those programs could have not happened without the tremendous support from the teachers especially, the classroom teachers and, like I said, all the others committees and Ed Fund and everything. It's just, it's been such an experience and it's very bittersweet, but I know that it's all in great hands and it's a great community. So thank you, thank you again.
Diane, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to add, again, Court, the resource you are Diane to me as a teacher and to all the projects I've done. Remember, we did the Save Our Sharks and really she and her husband made a life, we drew, she hired an artist and we drew a life-size white shark, right? And, wait, white. And then we used QR codes for the, and the kids researched the parts and people would use their phones on our Save Our Shark the night that we planned. And we worked really closely with that. You helped me with sea turtles, you helped me with bees. I mean, whatever I needed, you were a great resource, so thank you. And I appreciated your hard work and knowledge.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Court, I wanted to jump in again quickly too, just to send another one who I was almost disappointed to see on here and say, oh no, we're missing you. But, and I just have to share that my impression of Diane is, it's almost like this Diane being everywhere. You know, like she said, I've been on several field trips, they were amazing and involved, you know, in the, watching the STEAM lab happen. And my impression over the years that I've been here is I go into something great and realize, oh, Diane's behind this, oh, Diane's behind this, oh, Diane's involved with this. So it's just really neat to see how you have touched such a broad spectrum of the students' experience. So thank you for all of that.
Well, to the retirees who have joined us tonight, thank you so much. I think I speak for many of us when I say that we're finding ourselves very, very happy for you and tearing up at the same time.
Same here.
I wonder if I might share a couple of words from E.B. White, which perhaps speak to you, I hope they do. "If the world were merely seductive, that would be easy. If it were merely challenging, that would be no problem. But I arise in the morning torn between a desire to improve or save the world and a desire to enjoy or savor the world. This makes it hard to plan the day." We hope that you continue to have that kind of difficulty in planning your days because you have done so much to enrich this world. And we hope you savor all your accomplishments. We love you and we're grateful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know how to conduct a business meeting after that. But we're going to try because we're doing their work even as they leave us. I'm going to preface the next item, the Elementary School Improvement Plan, with the following. We have communicated with Dr. Hunter, we have been in correspondence with community members. Dr. Hunter's been in communication, of course, with the principals on this. And we are sensitive to the fact that the improvement plans, notwithstanding their importance, are still receiving attention from the school advisory councils, the leadership teams at each school and the educators in the building. Nonetheless, because it's the month of June, we want to look at the work in progress briefly and ask that Dr. Hunter, the principals, bring these back to us in early fall after there has been more time to reconvene the SACs after this past year. So I might turn it to you, Dr. Hunter.
Yeah, thank you. So you're correct, we definitely are bringing you plans that are in draft form. The pandemic brought its challenges and among them was the school improvement councils and the improvement plans. It's hard to make plans when the things around you are changing faster than you can keep up in present time, never mind go forward. But we thought it was really important that we give the school committee and the community at large some of what we're thinking going into the 21, 22 school year. It's great to feel like things are stabilizing and we can probably do a better job of outlining a more stable structure going forward and, you know, rethink some of the goals that maybe had to be put aside or look at where they are now, given the past year that we had. So these are definitely works in progress and we'd be happy to come back. So I am going to invite the principals to share, just one comment on the elementary one. We've been working hard over the last few years to better align the elementary schools. And so one strategy we've used is that the umbrella plan have some common goals to it, but each one of these umbrella plans will have action plans underneath that really are very building-specific and structured to the needs of the students in each school and the state of what that school needs. So I would not begin to say that these are not building-based plans. We just felt like we needed some structure to better align what was happening across the three. And so what you're seeing tonight is the umbrella plan that is common and then we'll be fleshing more of that out at the building levels. So I'm going to turn it over to the elementary principals. I think they've divided this up for discussion.
And before you do so, just a note for those in the audience and those who will attend to this later, we're not going to post these now, I believe, but rather in the fall, would that be accurate?
Well, so they're attached to the agenda as draft.
So they're available there.
And they are there and I can put them, screen share as we talk. We may post them to the school level as draft. We hadn't really gone that far, we wanted your feedback tonight.
All right, so if we choose to post them again, would be in draft form, thank you so much. Okay, sorry for the interruption.
No problem. So does someone want to kick it off? I'll screen share at least for a few minutes to show the structure and outline and let you folks talk on the goals.
Sure, I think I'm going to start.
I'll go here, Angel, to the.
Great.
I'll go here, Angel, to the goals and selves.
Wonderful. Okay. So the first goal that I'm going to talk about is multiple paths to success. So a year ago, when we were trying to think about plans for our reopening, we needed to think about how we were going to engage students in both the in-person partial day schedule as well as make sure that students who are learning in a fully remote environment were also all growing and learning. This year, we are looking at reengagement and bringing our community back together into a fully in-person learning environment. One of our big goals beyond just adjusting the safety protocols. And of course, we're going to work very closely with the Board of Health and with the state guidance around whether or not we're going to continue to do daily screenings. How are we going to minimize the impact of of screenings? And if we continue to do pool testing, how are we going to minimize the amount of learning time that is lost in that process? So we need to develop protocols to streamline all of those processes so that they really make sure that we're protecting time on learning. So that's the first big one around making sure that we're keeping everyone healthy and safe and but that it's not taking away from any of our learning time. In addition, one big takeaway that we learned this year, which was when we have been discussing things that we want to take into the future with our faculties, a big piece that came up was rather than spending the first couple of weeks of school focusing on assessing the students and figure out where they are right away, we are going to continue, we learned this year, the power of really focusing on relationship building, engaging students on a social emotional level. And that's going to be incredibly important this year as we transition all of our students back into full time. Some of our students have not been physically in the building for over a year. So we're going to really make sure that we're focusing on the social and emotional well-being of children so that then we can get to the important part of assessing students and figuring out what they need. One of the things that we're most excited about for the fall, given the most, the latest guidance that we're all going to be back in full time, we are not going to be offering a remote learning academy, so we're going to have all of our children under one roof, which we're thrilled about. We are also thrilled because that means that folks who had previously been responsible for providing a lot of our RTI instruction, our response to intervention, will be able to return to those roles. So we're looking at this as an opportunity to really rethink and reevaluate and strengthen our response to intervention models. So we will be able to be using new tools that we've been practicing with this year. For example, the STAR 360 assessment to figure out where students are early, identify gaps and very quickly try to fill those gaps with response to intervention. So we're really thrilled. It's definitely been a hole this year. It's been, you know, something that we've been missing and we cannot wait to get back to having a robust RTI model for both reading, writing and math. And of course, the social emotional piece as well. I can't, I have to say, the one thing I hear the most is our lunch bunch is coming back. You know, we really want to have that time for kids to work on those social skills in small groups. So I'm pleased to say that we're all committed to making sure that students are provided with a robust RTI structure for next year.
Thank you.
Naomi?
Okay, so I'm going to focus on some of the initiatives that we are thinking about under the district's well-being category. I think last year, we could have summarized our goal under well-being, something along the lines of let's try to make sure no one catches COVID. So this was filled with like all the protocol that we were going to develop and implement, really just around physical safety. And not that we don't have to worry about those things next year, you know, as we wait for students, as for for kids under 12 to be able to get vaccinated. It's certainly something that we're that we're going to focus on. But we are able, I think, to to focus sort of on the more traditional elements of this well-being category. And so one of the first things that that we would like to do, and this has come from pretty consistent feedback across all three schools. And Angel began to touch on it a little bit when she went over some of the initiatives under her her category that she shared, is really prioritize the relationship building at the beginning of the year. So we have been over the past month or two really getting feedback from faculty around things that we did because of the pandemic that we would want to capitalize on moving forward. And one of the things that has been really consistent in the feedback that we've gotten is that people really valued the emphasis that was placed at the beginning of the year on relationship building. Our our school mental health staff, our school adjustment counselors really revamped the open circle scope and sequence to front load some really important lessons at the beginning of the year. And again, that was done out of necessity because we had been closed for so long and we were trying to to respond to that. But it was something that everyone felt was really valuable and something that we would like to continue doing, moving, moving forward, is developing those really strong connections within classrooms at the beginning of the year. I think our next, our next initiative sort of takes it a step further. So while we want to really strengthen relationships and build community and connection within the classroom, we think that we can actually expand that that for this, the upcoming year. We really, it was something that we were not able to do this year because we couldn't cross cohorts. And so one of the things that we sort of lost this year was the connection across classrooms and across the whole school. And so while we we feel like we built really strong connections in the classroom, we need to now focus on building them, just building greater connections across the school. And so whether that, and this is where things might differ in each of the three buildings, but whether that means bringing back buddy classrooms or pen pals or just other structures that weren't possible because we couldn't cross cohorts this year. One of the things we really want to make sure we do in the fall is to just reestablish those cross-school connections. Something else, and it might seem sort of, sort of silly, but it's become very apparent, I think, in all three of the buildings, how necessary this is when we started pool testing, that we actually need to reacclimate students, particularly our youngest ones who have have never actually experienced school in a traditional school year, but reacclimate them to typical daily routines and to try to get some of those normal routines up and running again to to resume normal function and decrease anxiety. We we noticed while we were pool testing, kids didn't know how to get to the nurse's office and then they didn't know how to get back to their classrooms. And they don't actually know how to get to their classrooms going in through the front door because we've had all of these different protocol. And so we need to reflect on the protocol that we put in place this year and figure out what adjustments we need to put in place for next year to return to normal and then figure out how we teach students how to do this normal function. Because a third of the school has never done it before. You know, our kindergarteners last year, who are first graders this year, did it for a few months and then we closed. And so we just need to return to some of that normal function and think about how we want those normal routines to look. And then, you know, we've spent a lot of time over this last year looking at silver linings. And I think one of the silver linings that came out of this past year was the grant that allowed us to provide universal free lunch during COVID. And I think for as long as that is extended, we felt like that was another silver lining. And we really would like to collaborate with food services to figure out how we can keep that going for as long as the grant is in place to really encourage families to take advantage of that. Because I think that that directly relates to student well-being. So those, those are the sort of four areas that we were hoping to focus on under the well-being umbrella. And I think, Matt, Lucy, you are up next.
Happy. Thanks so much, Naomi. So I'm happy to talk to you about the last two, the our work that we anticipate taking on regarding the inclusive culture as well as the innovative environment of each of the buildings. First, inclusive culture. So this past year was a time that we all suffered through isolation. And it was impacted, families, students coming to school, as well as the staff. And it's going to be a passion of ours to return to an inclusive environment where all feel valued, all feel respected and all feel welcomed. And I think there'll be a greater energy because of the, you know, the the difficult times that we went through, right? Often when you have a traumatic experience, there's more fire in the belly. And I think that's what we will have moving forward. So for example, how do we again truly embrace those building wide experiences that make a school special? We were so grateful this year for the collaboration with parents and staff. And through Lori's, you know, tireless work to help us provide safe experiences that acted as traditions that may have been modified, but but still things that kids could hold on to that hearken back to the normalcy prior to the pandemic. And what we're really anxious to do is to return to a time when we can flesh out those those wonderful events again and return to a time when they're, they evoke joy, they reinforce community. We invite families to come together, students to embrace each other, literally and figuratively, around something that gives them pride about what they're learning, who they're learning it with and the Concord Public Schools and what it means. So we're looking forward to returning to those types of activities. We are very much looking forward to partnering with Andrew Nemeche and and his work. He can drive us to be better. And what he's going to be able to do is we have, each of us had these strands of passionate work that each building has done and I think have made a difference. Angel, Naomi and I speak regularly about the work that's occurring in each of our buildings. And but we were stronger when those threads are braided. And they are one as part of a stronger and more fertile community of action. So working with Andrew, we're looking forward to doing or continuing with the work of reflection, gathering information and professional development, which will enable us to provide a community again for students and families that will be welcoming, will be respectful and where all people feel valued. So having Andrew as a resource is going to enable us to do our work that much more fully. Another piece along that line is we will continue to do our work within the building, but also as part of Kristin's passionate work as a cultural competency committee where she partners with Andrew and others. And it's that magnitude of people working together to to ask tough questions, right? To have those difficult moments. But through those difficult moments, we have new understandings and greater commitment to working for all our students and all our staff where, again, all people feel welcomed and valued. So we're looking forward to continuing that work and also continue to work as we examine what we're teaching and what materials we're using. So the the work by the ELA folks and the library folks to go through and do an analysis and continue to do analysis of what is in our classroom libraries, what's in our main libraries? What are we asking students to engage with? And how do we better diversify the offerings of our bound material and digital material? That's a better reflection of our students and the greater world community. So we're committed to that. And then partnering with Michelle Saravera and Ruthie Grubie to continue to work to build an even more inclusive environment for students with disabilities, through the needs assessment, through professional development. And then again, aligning best practices across all three buildings, elementary, but also aligning vertically. How do we do our best work where we provide students with a free and appropriate education that is most inclusive, right, and least restrictive? Using best, best services delivered and in a thoughtful and and defined manner. So Michelle, we're looking forward to working with her and she can make us that much better as we progress, as always, to do a little bit more. So we're very excited about that. And then lastly, the innovative environment. Naomi mentioned it earlier, but this has been a year that we will have lost if we are not reflective in thinking, what are the silver linings and what do we want to carry forward? Not everything in times of trauma are things that were painful, but rather they may have been difficult to harness, they may have been abrupt in in how we took them on. But in the end, they pay dividends and it'd be foolish if we were just to cast them aside. So for example, the procurement process for new software that Kristin shepherded for us is going to be important to us because we need to glean what software is most useful to us? Where does it, is it most impactful to student learning? And is it cost effective? So we're looking forward to continuing to do that work. And thank you to Kristin for putting the pieces together. We need to be aware of the now ubiquitous access to technology. We need to be judicious in its use. So there are going to be lots of conversations with teachers and with students and with families about when is the best time to use technology, when is too much? And when is it just absolutely fantastically wonderful to put the technology aside? And so there will be times in which we will use technology, there'll be times when we will not. But it'll be based on what is good for kids and an assortment of different instructional moves. Again, providing access points for different students at different times. So we're going to be doing a lot of reflective work on that and putting that into place. One piece that we have really appreciated is greater access to families with the use of technology. Having Zoom, as much as all of us are fairly zoomed out at this point, but families have had access to their teachers and to student activities and to all student meetings and to IEP meetings and otherwise that they wouldn't ordinarily have had. And that's one that we will carry forward. I think providing greater access, and we believe providing greater access to parents and other family members to important parts of their students' learning and decision-making is one that we will carry forward and will be thoughtful about in what other ways do we want to engage using technology in the future. The use of Seesaw and Google Classroom as a platform has been very powerful. It's enabled teachers to collaborate and facilitate across disciplines and across grade levels. It was, you know, baptism by fire. And boy, oh, boy, I'm proud every day, as I know Naomi and Angel are, of the staff in our buildings and how smart and talented they are. They revolutionized their teaching practice, right, in a matter of weeks. And by the end of this year, they have, they have a robust arsenal of ways in which they're teaching using technology, using Seesaw, using Google Classroom, that enables them to connect at home, that there's more evidence or different evidence of learning. So we're looking forward to using that in the future in a measured approach, right? That there'll be lots of ways in which we rely on traditional, whether it's Socratic, small group, large group learning, but we're also going to be using technology as well. And then, speaking of which, Kristin, again, working with Kristin, all of our buildings have conducted the Futures Protocol where we were reflecting back on those silver linings and looking forward saying, with that experience, what does next year look like? And what do we want to implement? What do we truly want to own for next year? So we're going to be doing that work and it's going to be also complemented by surveys by that Dr. Hunter sent out as well as talking to the kids. What have they enjoyed, right? If you ever want a tough question answered, ask the kids. They'll give you a great start. So we need to be humble to listen to the students and what was important, what was joyful, what was impactful in their learning. And we'll carry that forward as well. So again, we're going to have some work to do when we get back. I think we'll know more over the summer as the DESC produces more definitive guidelines. But I think we've got a fleshed out skeletal plan that we will then, as Lori has always done, give us the the broad scope and then enables us to define tightly in each building what we need to do to achieve those goals. So on behalf of Angel and Naomi, thank you for the opportunity tonight to share our our draft plans with you. And we look forward to returning in the fall when we can speak with greater specificity.
Thank you very much, Angel, Naomi and Matt. We are going to be very, very brief in any comments we might make. One, because for your comments, the three of you on what are works in progress were nonetheless very, very helpful and complete. We appreciate your sensitivity to the reentry issues that will confront children. We appreciate your sensitivity to the reentry issues that will confront children. And some will be rather blasé about returning, and some will find it very difficult. And you're going to know the difference between the two. And I think we're very keen on the importance of greater greater access to parents and families and how you're going to continue to leverage that. But we're going to have much more complete conversations with you come the future. I will, before we move on to the middle school, ask, does any member have any brief operative word, brief here, comment or question? And that question might in fact be answered at a later date, not tonight, but I'll open the floor.
I have a brief comment, Cori, I'll be very brief, but I won't have a chance to comment in the in the fall. My brief comment is just, I love the optimism and forward looking tone of all of this and the fact that you are looking at things that happened in the past year and pulling out amazing silver linings and continuing things. And the the vision of that is just so impressive, and it makes me makes my heart full to see how you all are taking a crazy, incredible, many would call terrible year and and turning it into something even better. So I just love that.
Thank you. Dr. Hunter, we're going to turn to Mr. Cameron, I believe.
Sorry about that, I was muted. Yes, we are. He's gonna bring you the middle school plan. Same same umbrella on this in terms of where we are. And as Mr. Lucy mentioned, we're actively engaged in gathering feedback and input on from the community, both in terms of parents. That survey closed Friday. It's still open, so if anyone hasn't done it and wants to, they're welcome to. We're doing working on challenge success surveys with the middle and high school students, as well as, of course, as mentioned, talking with the elementary kids and this protocol we've been doing building by building together, staff feedback. So all that's a work in progress, which is going to highly inform these plans as we get to do some data diving this summer, and we'll certainly share some of those data points with you. So I'm going to turn now to Mr. Cameron to give us an overview of the middle school plan.
Good evening. I thought there was a school committee policy that I was not to follow Mr. Lucy in his presentations. A little side joke with Angel and I. I was pretty much, I put together that joke during his entire presentation. His brilliant words, I might add. Okay. So it's my honor to present to you a draft of a school improvement plan brought to you together by our School Advisory Council, which consists of parents, teachers, staff, Laura Brand, another administrator, and five students. This is an open meeting, as all of you know. Very proud to share, there were seven students from Student Council who attended this School Advisory Council meeting. I will say, they were more interested in the agenda item that was potential handbook, student handbook changes than the school improvement plan. However, they engaged during public comments, so I wanted to offer that. So if we scroll down, our format looks very similar to the elementary school in that we're in year three of multiple paths to success, well-being, inclusive culture, and innovation. I will say, you know, as we continue to move forward in a district improvement plan or strategic plans in a school improvement plan, you know, really speaks to the importance of retention and leadership, when you can really take even a deeper dive with school goals and know a sense of history and know a sense of, you know, the important direction that, you know, a school should be going in or a district should be going in. Under multiple paths to success, I remember clear as like it was yesterday, walking with Kristin Herbert as she was touring touring me around the Ripley Building and asking her where she felt that a goal, you know, we should put kind of slide our chips to as a goal in the middle school but across the district. And without hesitation, she said, response to intervention and the need to offer something that, you know, students who were either not eligible or maybe possibly on the path of eligibility to special education, there was really no systems in place to gather data and to offer interventions for those students before, again, that path of special education. It seemed like there was an all or nothing. There were in pockets some intervention programs at the middle school, but nothing to nothing that compares to the program of study that the middle school faculty and staff have committed to, and that will be in all three grades starting next school year. Opposite of those intervention blocks for those students who we assess every four months in the area of math, reading, writing, and social and emotional learning. If those students, if all their assessments come back and we partner with the family, we have a full menu of options for core teachers to be leading enrichment classes, many of them above level, above level, above grade level opportunities for students to stretch and to grow. The intervention classes, too, I might add, are being led by the licensed teacher in the area of the need. And I can't emphasize enough, taking taking nothing away from special education and the special education license, you know, the secondary level at the middle school and high school, you know, if if you need intervention in the area of, say, executive functioning, or if you need intervention in the area of reading or math, it's often that special education teacher who's in front of you, you know, in a school that does not have a robust RTI program. At the middle school, if you have areas of deficit in executive functioning, our school psychologist offers a class. If you have, you know, deficits in the areas of needing to build some resiliency and some organization to attack, let's say, a curriculum or a class, it's the guidance counselors who are leading those classes. Intervention and needs in the area of math, it's the licensed math teachers who are offering that intervention class. These intervention classes and enrichment classes run three times six. So we have a six day cycle at the middle school. So students sit in front of these teachers three times, three times every six days, and they run for a trimester long, so about four months or so. Our goal this year is to get this entire scope and sequence, every curriculum that's a part of our intervention classes, every class map outline for our enrichment classes, to get it on our curriculum website, which is Atlas, of course, so that our families have a better understanding of what is in front of our students in that intervention and enrichment block. Finally, part of that, of course, is to continue in our third year, the STAR assessments and the PARE, which is again, the SEL assessment. That data, as I mentioned just a couple minutes ago, informs the groupings and brings the classes together every four months or so. Dr. Hunter, should I pause after each one or just kind of plow through?
I'm going to ask you to continue through.
Okay, thank you. So underneath well-being, you heard my esteemed elementary principals, colleagues, share that we need to prioritize a transition back to the buildings, especially those students who have not been in the buildings since March of 2020. All of those students started the pandemic and the school closure. You know, if they started it as sixth graders, they're going to be in a brand new building in our seventh and eighth grade building at Sanborn. If they started as fourth graders, they're going to be in a brand new building at the puberty building. Doesn't matter where they started, they're going to be landing in late August in a building that is going to be unfamiliar to them. We have also reached out very recently. We have started to see some areas of school phobia, some school anxiety, and we need to get ahead of that. And we need to make sure that parents have access to the same, you know, specialists, the same consultants, the same people who lead these areas of mental health. And I will say, the opportunity to continue this partnership in a Zoom format or a webinar format allows parents to come together and not necessarily identify themselves or identify their student as a student who might be struggling. I wanted to offer that because a parent shared that with me just the other day. I think you also heard Dr. Hunter mention that in the last few weeks, part of our health classes, all middle school students took about a 45 minute, very comprehensive challenge success survey that came through Kristin's office, and we're looking forward to those results. In pickup, in my pickup line for my first grader, I had a very lengthy conversation in the car with somebody at Challenge Success and looking to match us up with a coach, a challenge success coach, who is going to be working with the middle school. We were looking at a teacher group, a parent group, and a student club that would get together as frequent as they define, but all three groups would also get together probably quarterly. We found that that was a format that worked very well for us a couple years ago. And then under well-being, we also are looking to, one of the eighth grade teams is currently piloting a PBIS, which is a Positive Behavioral Incentive Systems or supports that allows a school culture to focus on the students who, you know, we would like to cast the light on and really prop up as models for the other students. You know, in a cliched format, it's an opportunity to really catch students, you know, doing good and making sure that our climate, our culture has as much focus on those students than a very small minority of students, you know, who might not necessarily be making good choices. Under the area of inclusive culture, we are looking at using the RTI, which is the enrichment class block, as extending our school improvement goal and the strategic plan in the area of social justice, anti-discrimination, bias prevention, and look to offer more classes. And then we're also looking to expand, I can't believe this, we're in year four of the Anti-Discrimination Bias Prevention Playbook Initiative Program. This past year, even during a pandemic, we're so proud to have offered this as a student training. We were able to do an in-person training, and the student leaders of the playbook had a wonderful opportunity to bring every bus driver, the entire, every employee of the transportation department, through the Playbook Initiative Diversity Training. We had students who wrote scenarios of, you know, different things that bus drivers may find themselves, you know, in a scenario regarding a student and maybe a student on student in the area of teasing or bullying in, you know, their disability or their race or their religion, and how that would look like from the bus driver perspective. Just a quick shout out to the Self-Ex Playbook Leaders for leading that training about a month ago. And under innovation, we are continuing to look at Zoom for an opportunity to keep that bridge open to our families and to our parents. Like many schools, not just across the district, but across the state and across the country, we see, we saw a tremendous uptick in parent engagement, you know, even when a reminder was sent out, let's say, half an hour before a meeting, we saw, you know, a population of a meeting almost doubled because parents would receive that email and hop right onto the Zoom. We also want to make sure that we're in support of our working parents, our parents from the Boston community. And, you know, when it comes time to, you know, have kind of our round robin parent conferences, we want to make sure that's an option, especially for a 10 minute conference. And then working closely with the building committee and the architects, we're in a continued pursuit of innovation, that anything that we may look to have in place, the best example I can give is the maker spaces. When we talk about, you know, what a maker space looks like in a new school, you know, how do we adopt that and bring that into an existing school? So looking at any innovation that, you know, if we go back and do school visits or just read and learn of different ways that teaching, how teaching can look so differently, how do we bring that into place for the current students in front of us?
Excellent, Justin, thank you very much. So and we want to acknowledge that you suffered more environmental stresses today and yesterday than perhaps the other buildings, but we heard you manage that nicely. But more importantly, the look ahead you've given us with the school improvement plan is is impressive. We know you've got a lot on your plate, and we appreciate your sharing it with us. Questions or comments? Alexa?
Yeah, so, you know, it's funny, when when Lori had sent us an email, I don't know if it was last week or earlier this week, saying that these were going to be in draft form, I don't know, I guess my expectations are sort of low. And hearing the four of you speak, I'm actually, I'm pleased with where these are. And if this is the draft, I think this is an excellent start, and I'm really excited to see this. And, you know, Lori and I had this conversation a while ago. I remember when Lori started in the district, one of the things she said at some like really early coffee was about how it was interesting to her that our district had three elementary schools that seemed sort of disparate in their workings, like almost like three little islands. And, you know, she sort of said, hmm, I don't know what to make of it. I'm just going to sit here and learn for a year and then sort of see where it goes. Everyone performs really well. And I think it is so great. I know Matt really well, and I know Angel really well. Naomi, I haven't had an opportunity to meet you yet. I love that you guys are working together because I think your skill sets are all really complementary and different. I'm like oddly getting emotional about this. But I it's just, it's really awesome to see these, you, the three of you working together. And I think it's great. I think I'm just excited. This was more than I had hoped for. My expectations were low, I guess. So thank you all, and Justin, you're always impressive. So this was great. I'm really pleased, guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
If I could jump in again quickly, again, because it's my last chance I would get to comment to them.
You can have all the time you want.
I won't take that much time. I just want to say also directly to Justin, I mean, similar to what Alexa said, it's wonderful and impressive, but and also just looking at the progression over the past few years from where the middle school was envisioned when you stepped into this, Justin. I mean, talk, you know, talk about it a different direction and 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 so much more visionary and focused than it ever used to be. So looking at this, it's whatever, even in draft form, it's wonderful. And especially looking at the progression over the several years, I just, I so appreciate where you've taken the middle school and where it's going, where you're taking it. So thank you for all that.
Thank you. You know, it's a, we're a product of, you know, all the sum of the parts. So the faculty and staff are a huge, huge part of that. And, you know, opportunity to share out and shout out to Tyler, Olive, Laura, Dr. Hunter, Kristin, Andrew, Jared, and Ruthie, too.
Amazing team.
All right, thank you all. Thank you very much. We wish you a very safe and pleasant summer. We might hold on to Mr. Cameron for another couple of minutes. We have as our next item on the agenda, forgive me for trying to move right along, but again, our thanks. We're going to move to our action items, the first being the middle school handbook. Good night, all. The first being the middle school handbook where we're looking The first being the middle school handbook, where we're looking at changes that include references to consequences around student behavior, vaping nicotine, one, physical assault, two, and wandering the building when you're not supposed to, three, and then, secondly, some changes in the dress code. I wonder if we could get, I think the changes are self-explanatory, we've looked at them, perhaps you could simply speak to the origins of these changes, why, how did this come about?
Sure. You know, again, I want to give a shout out to our incredible, incredible school council, our group of students led by the advisor, Ms. Anderson. I have not, you know, 23 years in a middle school, I have not seen engagement like the students who commit them, they commit themselves weekly, every Thursday, they shifted their meetings start time around, I think, 3:30 or 3:15 for our Boston students. It's been incredible. I would not be sitting here sharing proposed changes if it wasn't for them, I want to be very honest. You know, they came in and they know that a big part of their role, their responsibility is to promote positive school culture, but they also know that they represent and they're the voices of the students. That's really the origin of the potential changes in the dress code. So, I think all of you have been, have been given a draft of that potential change. It's not a big change, you know, they actually want to bring together a committee of students, staff, potentially parents, to really do a deep dive on our dress code, particular, in a particular focus on whether or not, you know, there's gender shaming done in not only our dress code, but just dress codes, you know, across public schools in the country, a particular focus, you know, on those who identify as girls in particular. They do recognize they being the students of student council, that they need some guidance and support in that very important conversation. They recognize the urgency of it, but I will give them a ton of credit, and they only started in on this topic maybe about a month to month and a half ago, and they quickly realized they didn't have enough time, and they wanted additional voices in the room as well. So I think this is a starting place, and really the only change is the fact that our current policy says that there's no part of the stomach that can be shown at any time, and there's just been a shift to if there is a stomach showing, then that will be allowed for either gender, anyone who's identifying at either gender.
All right, thank you. Dr. Hunter, would I be accurate in saying that these changes are consistent with the formal policies adopted by the school committee and provide more specificity? Questions? We'll put another motion on the floor and then look to discussion. The motion reads that the Concord School Committee votes to approve changes in the CMS Handbook as outlined in the attached document that you have received. I'll ask for a motion to that effect, please.
So moved.
And then the second, please.
Second.
Thank you very much. Conversation, discussion, questions, please.
I thank the students for their thoughtful consideration and continued work on this
I agree, and I hand it to the students, I might have looked at it without context and said, oh, I don't know, is this a little too, you know, is this opening the boundaries too much? But your context and the participation of the students in this and their thoughtful engagement with it, I'm very impressed. Let's support it.
So do convey our sentiments to the students, if you would, Mr. Cameron. I'm going to call for a roll call, please.
Anderson, aye.
Booth, aye.
Aye.
Ms. Judge, aye.
Rainey, aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cameron. We're going to move to the SOI, the Statement of Interest to the MSBA for the CMS Building Project. We have discussed this at length over a number of meetings. What comes before us tonight is the formal language that now follows the more generic language that we applied to move this to the Select Board. Select Board having moved on it, now send back the formal language to us. And without forewarning her, I'm going to ask, Heather, would you care to read it?
My favorite skill, I'd love to.
Do you have it in front of you?
I do, I have it in front of me.
I thought you just might.
Yeah, I was ready for you, Court. Okay, I will move on the behalf of the Concord School Committee that it be resolved that having convened in an open meeting on June 8, 2021, and June 1, 2021, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the School Committee of Concord and Select Board, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated May 28, 2021, for the Concord Middle School located at 835 Old Marlboro Road and 1231 Old Marlboro Road, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future for priorities number two, number five, and number seven, with deficiencies as follows. Priority number two, elimination of severe overcrowding, this condition has been addressed by use of an elementary school being converted to use as the second middle school building in 1967. Priority number five, replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. The two buildings that serve as the middle school have significant capital requirements with roofing, HVAC, and other systems reaching obsolescence after nearly 50 years. Priority number seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. Having two buildings located a mile apart requires duplication of many services and increases staffing costs significantly. These funds could be used to improve the direct educational experiences of the middle school students housed in the PBIS and Sandbar Buildings, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the City, Town, Regional School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Discussion, please.
Just to note it, as discussed last time, we all agreed that we should submit this out of responsibility to make sure we're covering all bases, and that if we were approved, we would then have to do the analysis of whether or not to move forward with it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Anderson, aye.
Booth, aye.
About aye.
Ms. Judge, aye.
Rainey, aye.
Thank you very much. The motion passes, and our final action item on the Concord side tonight is a vote to approve the Concord Public Schools Building Service Workers' three-year successor. And I think at this time, I speak for all of us when I note that the K-8 and high school building workers have done exceptional, beyond exceptional work, keeping these facilities safe, clean, beyond clean, sanitary, and a place that was not a fearful prospect for people to enter when we could get them open. So our heartfelt thanks to, to the building workers for, for the work, much of which is done even after hours when some of us don't see it. But the results are in happy kids and happy teachers who are doing the work we want them to do without that distraction of a building that doesn't measure up. In a pandemic, we measured up, so thank you all. The motion reads that the, well, I'll read Dr. Hunter's memo, the Concord Public Schools' Building Service Workers and the School Committee negotiating team have agreed to a three-year successor agreement, including a 2.25 increase to the salary schedule in year one, a 2.25 increase in year two, and a 2.25 increase in year three. Dr. Hunter recommends that the Concord Public Schools School Committee vote to approve the CPS Building Service Workers' three-year successor agreement with the following motion. Motion that the Concord Public Schools School Committee vote to approve the CPS Building Service Workers' unit three-year successor agreement for the period of fiscal '22 through fiscal '24. Is there a motion to that effect, please?
So moved.
And is there a second, please?
Second.
I'll start discussion by saying thank you to the negotiating team, everybody on the respective teams that came together to, to work on this. Questions, comments, discussion, please?
Nope, I just want to thank Mr. Bozak and Mr. Noe, who are negotiating with us.
Huge thanks and echo the appreciation that Court already mentioned. I know we all do.
Same here, just wanted to thank both employees that we negotiated with, and it was a good learning experience for me, and I thank both of them for their service and staying with us.
And we hope they too enjoy their summer and get away from our lovely buildings a bit. I'll call for a roll call, please.
Anderson, aye.
Booth, aye.
About aye.
Ms. Judge, aye.
Rainey, aye.
Thank you very much. That concludes the Concord-only portion of the meeting, and our Carlisle counterparts are with us this evening. We're going to turn to our Chair, Sarah Wilson, please.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to call to order the June 8 Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Anderson, present.
Booth, present.
Present.
Ms. Judge, present.
Stucky, present.
Rainey, present, sorry.
Wilson, present. Okay, hi, everyone. So, we can start with a public comment. If you have a comment to make, please use the raise hand feature down in the Zoom area, or turn on your video so that we can see you and identify you. Please state your name, your address, please keep comments to no more than three minutes. And with that, I will open it up to public comments, if we have any.
Mr. Bozak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Madam Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thanks. Members of the School Committee, Dr. Hunter and Mr. Stanton, good evening, and thank you for all those kind words, I appreciate them, on behalf of all the Building Service Workers. Heather Bout, I wanted to comment a couple of things on Heather. It's a sad day for me, her last meeting, she's a person I admire, respect, and she's finishing up her term as school committee, and I don't want her to leave. I first met Heather about five and a half years ago, when this, I had some issues, the school district wasn't the same school district it is today. I reached out to her, and she listened, and in fact, she did more than listen. And I'm so thankful to Karen Baker, who said to me, call Heather Bout. So I'm very thankful to that. I've got to know you, I've got to know your kids, Italia, Mateus, and Sawyer, and of course, Whitney and Leo, I can't.
Everyone knows the dogs, right?
I'm not sure you know, Heather, the impact you've made in the past six years, your impact on students, your impact on faculty and staff, your tireless work with the Concord Middle School Building Committee, and so much more. Every time I talk to you, you're always so thankful to the faculty, to the staff, to the administration, who you regard so highly, and so do I. You're a class act, and your impact in this school district has been huge. You're an outstanding school committee member, you're everything a school committee member should be, and, but more importantly, you're a wonderful human being. I wish you all the best, I'll miss you, but I'll still see you around.
Wow, thank you so much, Jim, I am touched and moved by that, I, wow, thank you.
Wish you well.
Means a lot.
Mr. Bozak, thank you, and Heather, just a warning, we're not done with you yet.
It's hard to follow on that.
I know.
That got it all. That was really nice.
You know, I'll just agree with him, and I'll be amazed.
Okay, are there any other public comments? I see no raised hands, Court.
No.
And I don't see any new videos anymore. No. Okay, so I think we can go to the reading of the minutes, right, from open session on April 27, May 4, and May 11.
Move to accept.
Second.
Roll call, discussion? Many thanks.
Many thanks.
And roll call.
Alexa, you're muted.
Anderson, aye for both.
Booth, aye for both.
About aye for both.
Ms. Judge, aye for both.
Stuffy, aye for region.
Rainey, aye for both.
And Wilson for region, thank you. Chairs and liaisons reports. Do we have any this evening?
I think Heather and I can talk middle school in a moment, I'll give you another one briefly first, and that is the Public Access Advisory Committee, on which I serve as your liaison. The committee is suffering difficulty trying to field five community volunteers, and we're recommending to the Select Board that the, the at-large community component be reduced to three, not limited to three, but that it be acceptable if only three citizen volunteers come forward. The school committees will continue to have a liaison membership role on the Public Access Advisory Committee, and we're looking at upcoming contracts with our cable TV providers, and Carlisle is as well, and we're trying to see that the two towns coordinate a little more fully than we've been able to in the past, and that's looking quite good. Heather, would you be so kind on the middle school?
Yeah, sure, I'll just, I can add in, or we can, the update that we have kicked off schematic design, which is very exciting, as you probably know, we finished up the feasibility study. In our last two meetings, there was basically a discussion about how schematic design will proceed, as you all know, because we had some discussions here about it. Initially, the suggestion was to have focus groups that would meet about specific topics based on feedback from both some, both building committee members as well as our feedback here, that that didn't seem, I guess, open enough and public enough with the community. We're, we're moving forward with a slightly revised plan, so our designers came forward with a new suggestion that does not use focus groups, but really will entail the design team going and doing some data gathering with the various experts, and then coming and bringing all information and recommendations to the full building committee. So everything will be as completely transparent as it always has been with the community. In the event that there is further discussion and deliberation needed on a particular topic, the committee will then ask subcommittees to go off and do further work. So the subcommittees will still have their role as directed by the committee whenever there's more information to explore. So that's how we're moving forward, we'll be meeting every three weeks, even throughout the summer. There is a lot to do in the next several months. Schematic design will run about five months and get us to estimating in November, with the goal still to have a special town meeting in mid-December. The tentative date is December 10, but that's not, that's not completely confirmed yet with the town. And then an election would follow that, either, either very shortly afterwards or in March, that's not yet established, and that will decide whether we move forward. Just, was it just yesterday? It feels like days ago. Just yesterday, last night, we had our last public forum, which went through all of this and kind of the wrap-up of the feasibility and study and how schematic design will go forward, and the recording of that was already sent out to the district, I think to all of our lists, I need to make sure that it went to everybody that it needed to, but that went out to everybody, so hopefully you've all seen that. If you missed the forum, you can watch the recording, lots of great information. If you missed the forum, you can watch the recording. Lots of great information. And of course, information's updated on the website, cmsbuildingproject.org. Okay, Court, what did I miss?
Not a thing, thank you. That covers it, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other updates? No.
I have, I have one if everybody's complete. And that is just a note looking ahead, Sarah. I have sent all the members a copy of the current roster of School Committee assignments as to liaise roles with various other committees. And asked that each person who's currently serving in a liaise capacity, give us one or two sentences as to the nature of the work and the likely meeting schedule for next year. I'm going to recommend to the committee that in July, at our July meeting, we begin to look into that and try to finalize it in August, if that's to everybody's satisfaction.
Great. Thank you, Court. Thank you. Correspondence on the regional side, we just had one correspondence. There was a question about whether or not the school choice vote had already occurred. We respond that it had. Court, you?
Two pieces of correspondence. One, we referenced earlier in the CPS meeting to the effect that the School Advisory Councils are going to be examining the school improvement plans more fully before they're brought back to us. That some of those councils had difficulty convening or gathering the necessary numbers for the necessary perspectives we're looking for from the community, from the school communities. And secondly, had a person flagged the fact, no pun intended, I don't know why that came out, flagged the fact that after months of not in school, a teacher had failed to remember that pledge is required in the morning, the pledge of allegiance. So Dr. Hunter quickly remedied that and we thank the party in question, who in turn thanked us for being nimble about it.
Great. Thank you. So now on to the more exciting things of the evening, recognitions. We'll start, I believe I saw Victoria here, right? Okay, so let's, let's go in our, in our order then. Dr. Hunter? Hi, Victoria, welcome. Thank you for being here.
So as we did a few minutes ago, we were, we're really celebrating the educators who've had such a long-lasting impact on our schools and the students that they serve. So Mr. Mistrullo is here to introduce the one retiree from the high school. And he'll give us some thoughts on, on her time with us and then we'll smile and ask Vicky if she wants to share anything.
Yeah, so it's my pleasure to speak on behalf of Victoria Moskowitz, also affectionately known as Vicky. The consummate professional, for one. One of the kindest people I've ever met, has been here for, I believe, 29 years. Oh, oh, we're shooing him away. He can't, you are more than welcome, sir. She is exceptionally bright and really goes out of her way to make sure that all students and staff feel welcome. It's, it's, it's a very collaborative department with a lot of great personalities. They have a lot of fun. And Vicky's a big part of that. And she cares deeply about our kids and they know that. And she is, you know, we need more Vicky Moskowitz in, in the school. And when we, we hire, I've told her many times, we're trying to find, you know, the next Vicky. I know that her department is devastated and rightfully so. No, they certainly are. It is, I guess I am a little sad that she had to end in this capacity. I'm glad she was back in the building before the year closed. I know she had some reservations about teaching during COVID. And, and I'm sorry if I'm sharing too much, Vicky, but you know, thought about either taking a year or calling it a career last year. And to suggest that she rose to the challenge would be the understatement of the century. I will say that I did try, I'm sure I played very little role in this. However, I, I did try my best to ask her to stay on for another year. And I think, you know, the students and the staff are better for it. She's going to be missed. I hope she doesn't disappear and, and, and become a stranger. I know that she'll, she has a lot of very close friends in the department. We'll remain close to them. But, you know, we would love to have her back. And you never know, Vicky, I know right now you would say not in a million years. However, you know, things happen. We get maternity leaves, leaves for other reasons. And there, you know, there's always an open door if you are willing. I know right now you would say no way. However, you never know. Maybe a year from now you would reconsider. But you'll be, you'll be missed greatly. And it's been a pleasure to get to know you. A wonderful human being and a tremendous educator. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Well, Mike, we know that you are excellent with rhetoric. We didn't know you needed to work on your persuasion skills.
Well, I was successful because, I'm sorry, it was la, it was at the beginning of this year, she was saying, "I don't know." It was a success.
All right, excellent. So, so Vicky, last spring, at the, at the height of the fearful chaos as the pandemic took hold, we had the opportunity to discuss conditions with a few high school students. And for me, the most memorable was, well, what I really want is, well, sure, I want my teachers to be brilliant. But really what I want is, I want them to be kind. And I think they were talking about you. And it goes so far. You know, we like to think that adolescents are nearly grown up and maybe don't need the nurturing that younger kids do. But the best among you at the high school understand that ain't so, that you're still nurturing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And can I particularly thank you for your persuasion skills, Mike? Because my family has been personally, has personally benefited from that care this year. And I am so glad you are here for this year, as is my daughter. And I, it's, we're, we're so lucky to have had you. And I'll just point out that, look, there's someone else showing up on our Zoom here who might have retired at some point. And look, is back doing something else. So to Mike's point, keep your options open. We would love to see you around some more, Vicky.
I thought Peter was here for me.
And Vicky, to be, to be clear, I don't, with all humility, yes, I tried to persuade her to stay. And as, and she was here. However, I do think we might be conflating coincidence and correlation. I was just going to try, that's.
Mike, I, I have to thank you for, you were very supportive of me when I was very anxious last year and, and over the summer, not sure what was going to happen. And you were really encouraging and supportive and encouraging me to just like stick it out and that things would work out. And they did. So I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
And from a personal perspective, my older son was lucky enough to have Ms. Moskowitz for two years. So she had a big impact on him, for sure. And he greatly improved his writing skills with your help. So I appreciate that very much.
Well, I want to give a shout out to Vishal, who's here, who just gave a tremendous speech at graduation. Vishal, I was so proud of you. That was, that was such a great speech. And I mean, I know we didn't get to the speech unit last year in rhetoric, did we? But, but, but you definitely did us all proud. And, and your kindness, I mean, I think your kindness came through in that speech. And I think that is one of the things that I'm going to take away from, from Concord Carlisle is how kind and caring our students are. And, and that speaks to the community and where they're coming from and their families. So thanks, Vishal, for that.
Thank you, Ms. Moskowitz. I, I know we didn't get to the speech unit, but definitely your, your teaching and your influence on my writing and speaking and everything was definitely a big help. So while we're on the topic, I just want to say thank you too and, and congratulations. I know we didn't have a long class together. It was right during the pandemic. But, but, but I still enjoyed it very much and I'm, I'm sure, well, I'll miss you here at CC.
Thanks. Thank you. I don't know if I'm supposed to say anything. I wasn't sure whether I was just supposed to bask in the glory here or what.
I think that's, I think that's the right response.
But I will say, since I have all of you here on my Zoom, that, you know, I, it, it's just sort of amazing to me that it's been almost 30 years of teaching at Concord Carlisle High School. And it's been such a rewarding place to be an educator. It is, as Mike said, the English department has been, you know, so full of camaraderie and support. And we inspire each other. And I would extend that to the high school as a whole. It was, when I first started teaching there, I was just kind of blown away at how smart everyone was and how dedicated and passionate about teaching and how much they also cared about their students. And so much great conversation and camaraderie and fun. It's wonderful that Peter is here because Peter was a big part of all the fun that we had and the camaraderie, you know, across departments. And so I'm very grateful. Of course, I'm grateful to the support that the community and the families have historically shown to the teachers and, and the trust that, I think there was a big piece of that is just trusting us, trusting our judgment, trusting us to try new things, trusting us to be good mentors and role models for your stu, for your children. I, that's been, the relationships between the teachers and the community, I would say, by and large, have been really productive and supportive. And I have appreciated that very much. Thank you.
Vicky, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much and good luck and enjoy.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks. And it's, so let's, let's continue. I, I hope you stay around for.
I'll shut up the camera.
Because right now, I believe we have Peter Atlas here with, with two now CCHS grads. I think you're not even our students anymore, right? To tell us about the impressive work that you guys have done this year. Welcome, Peter.
Thank you. In fact, we have Vishal Chandra and Aron Martini in here and they are joined by me. Vishal, I think, is going to give the presentation. And I just, the only thing I want to say is, what we did was, in, in essence, the format of a graduate seminar. The only thing I did was ask questions in the right order. And the presentation you're about to get is, they know more about the subject than I do at this point. And so if you have any questions, direct them to Vishal.
Thank you, thank you. Welcome, Vishal. Welcome, Aaron.
Thank you. Let me just see if I can get our, get our slides up here. One second. All right, is that working for everybody?
Yes.
All right. Well, so I'll bring Mr. Atlas back in, in a second here, but I just thought I would introduce the project. So it, it was initiated by Mr. Atlas during our spring semester of BC Calculus last year, so spring 2020. And it's, it's in some ways a spin-off of the sabbatical work he did in 2004. Sorry, sorry about that disruption there. Hold on one second. So I just wanted to start off and say some, say some thank yous to the, to the people who got us through it. We just, we were presenting to the math department earlier today. So this was a little bit more relevant there. But of course, thank you to Mr. Atlas for starting off the project. Thank you to Ms. Kieselbach for, for kind of facilitating this presentation and facilitating the presentation with the math department. And of course, thank you to our math teachers who gave us the education and the curiosity to get through the project. So I'll pass it to Mr. Atlas here, just so he can kind of tell you the origin story.
In 2004, I was awarded a sabbatical to do some original mathematics research on kaleidos cycles. You are looking at a, a shape that is a kaleidos cycle. My particular research was to posit the existence of a four-dimensional analog to that shape. In the, in the sabbatical request form, in the process of applying for the sabbatical, I had to write who it would benefit. I had to explain who it would benefit. And I told, I, I wrote that I would be sharing the results of my research with groups of kids who were interested to deepen their, their love of mathematics and art. I've done that for 17 years. And I am delighted to say that have, because of the largesse of the School Committee and the superintendent for awarding that sabbatical, a lot of kids have participated in getting us to, to the point where Aron and Vishal could do this part of the research, write a paper and publish it. So back to you, Vishal.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so as, as Mr. Atlas said, this was born out of his sabbatical research. And this, this slide is kind of the essence of what, what our research was about. These continuously averting toroidally rotating structures called kaleidos cycles. Just for a little bit more background, I said we started in spring 2020. We started off by making some origami models of the structures in, in our calculus class. You can see some of those on the right. And, and it was also one of Mr. Atlas's very close friends, Karen Johnson, whose work was the motivation for our project. She designs these kaleidos cycles and, and mathematical toys for children. And to, to make these custom and make different designs of these is very labor-intensive and sometimes prohibitively so. So our project was to give her a way to visualize different versions of these in the computer. And hopefully in the future, she will be able to 3D print them and the whole process can be computerized. We're not quite there yet, as you'll see, but that was the, the motivation for the project. So some of the prior work, as, as we talked about, this sabbatical is, has been going and students have been benefiting from it for a long time. So Colwyn Stanley, in the class of 2016, also worked with Mr. Atlas. And they based their work off of this paper by somebody named Marcus Engel. And he made a simulator using the Java programming language. And that was a 2D, pretty rudimentary simulator. But it was, was definitely the basis for our work and showed us what was possible. So just wanted to give that shout out there. So one of the first steps of ours, our, our work was to convert Cole's program from two-dimensional simulation to three-dimensional simulation. Obviously, these are three-dimensional structures. They're sculptures almost, if you will. And to simulate them in the computer, there's a variety of ways to do it. Cole's program mapped the, the points in space where the sculpture was and kind of flattened them onto a 2D plane so it could be viewed by the computer screen. We took a little bit different approach where the whole three-dimensional structure was simulated. And we left that to other prior work to convert that 3D structure to something 2D you can see on your screen. So the reason we did that is because these kaleidos cycles, as you saw, they can be composed of these tetrahedra structures or any other various number of shapes. To visualize those, as we wanted to do with Karen's work, is much easier in three dimensions. So that was kind of the motivation there. So that was the first improvement we made on Cole's program. The second one is really a novel piece of, of this work. And it was what allowed us to publish it in a upcoming, upcoming conference this summer. There's a technique in computer aided design, CAD, that allows one solid to be almost subtracted from the other. So if you look into this bottom corner, you can see a sphere being subtracted from the corner. And that's done through a technique called CSG. I'll spare you the details on that. But that has not been applied to these kinds of structures before. So that marriage of two concepts is, is what's so novel about this. So that was the second improvement we made to Cole's program. And that's, that's where the name Sculptable Kaleidos Cycles comes from. This subtraction process we, we labeled as sculpting. So just to recap, this, on the right here is this, the previous work that Mr. Atlas did with a student five years ago. Six years ago, actually, sorry. Student graduated five years ago. We made two improvements and have developed a new website for the work. And that has some novel capabilities, which you'll see soon. some novel capabilities, which you'll see soon. So here are some of the results of the program. The sculpting allows us to go from something simple like this, as you saw on the first slide, just some still beautiful structures, but geometrically pretty simple, to very complex, almost art sculpture kind of realm of things. And these are two results. Of course, the one on the right-hand side would not be possible to make in real life, because it's so perforated and complex. The left-side one is actually, could be made in real material. And then I'll also show you an interesting mechanism. We found that our program can be used to make some interesting new mechanical devices. So this here on the right, or in the center, is similar to what you saw on the first slide. It has a cube cut out of it, which gives it these leg kind of appearances. And we thought that may be really similar to something like an arcade claw, or something used to grab in various mechanical applications. And of course, the implications are really unlimited here. What we've made is almost just an enabler for future work in this area, but that is something that hadn't been done before. We're still not, we're at a point where we're happy with our results, but there are more things we can do, of course. So some of the future work here, as we said, the 3D printing support, if these structures could be directly printed out, 3D printed, rapidly developing technology, as many of you might have heard of. Of course, like when you see the simulation, we can't really do this in real life, or we just put them next to each other and assume that they're connected. We have to, we have to develop some kind of hinge or adhesive mechanism, which would be another discovery or endeavor in its own. So we've left that undone. We did make a prototype, 3D printed prototype using our program. The pieces were separated when they were printed, and it was up to us to kind of use Tyvek or some kind of duct tape to connect them together. And the second is texture mapping. I'll turn this over to Arun. Arun, if you just want to chime in about texture mapping and some other future work, feel free.
Sure. So one of the, our inspirations for this project, and one of the most known books out there for collida cycles is M.C. Escher Collida Cycles, which focuses on sort of developing these textures that you see in the top right, over the collida cycle. And we can apply this to our sort of truncated or sculpted collida cycles in a way that would be artistically beautiful, I suppose.
Yeah, and then, just, I know there's a lot going on in this presentation, so just to give you a recap, essentially, we have these origami structures, which we first played around with, with Mr. Atlas in his calculus class. We realized, and Mr. Atlas's close friend had realized also, that many articulations can be made upon them. And we noticed that the technology wasn't really available to do that in the computer. So we set out to do that, and we achieved some pretty interesting results. So I guess the fruits of Mr. Atlas's 2004 sabbatical keep coming, and we hope that we've set up future students to keep working on it. But that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for bringing this to us. I'm not going to profess to really understand your systems, but I am going to say that I think what stands out and what resonates with me is the thread of how you find inspiration through someone else's work, and how we build on the work of the other. It's a relevant lesson that I think we can all take away from, with the groundwork being laid by Peter Atlas, and then an initial stab done by Cole, and then you guys moving it even forward, further, and really finding, like, and exploring your own interest in the work that was done by someone else. That itself is just inspiring to me. And congratulations on continuing to find more applications, more implications, and to find this inspiration to begin with.
The, Peter Atlas, former CCHS teacher, the school committee and the superintendent at the time, awarded a sabbatical, which is a long-term investment in the faculty. And it's not just Cole and these two kids, there have been many, many kids who have reaped the reward of that long-term investment. I know that as a culture, we no longer really think about long-term investments. Things are short measurable bursts. I'd like to take this opportunity to, again, to thank the committee and the superintendent for the trust they placed in me, that I would, in fact, share this with as many kids as I could, and take the work and the investment that you guys put into me further. It is a special thing to be able to work with kids of the caliber of those at CCHS.
Peter, thank you. Vishal and Arun, thank you for not embarrassing me tonight. No, I mean that, actually, you know, I'm not just being silly. You did a very fine job presenting it. Two questions. One is what we saw, an early prototype of what will someday be an amazing valve mechanism that will revolutionize medicine, or, you know, where do your dreams take you with this? And are you putting all of this in, question number two, are you putting it in the public domain, or where does it go?
Yeah, so I'm glad you brought up the valve idea. We definitely saw some kind of valve implications as well. And in the paper we submitted to the conference for this summer, we explored some other mechanisms. I knew we wouldn't be able to fit it all into this presentation, but yeah, we did have some more interesting mechanisms with spheres cut out and things like that, which we thought really implied valve mechanisms. So we do think it has potential there, especially because the area that opens up is so manipulable, and it's so controllable. So I'm not sure where those kinds of valves might be used in the future, but we definitely did see those same kinds of themes. And to the second question, yeah, our work will be published into the public domain. There's this conference called Bridges Math Art, which is focused on the connections between mathematics and art. And their entire archives for over a decade are online, and they're updated every year. So our work will be added to that. We're lucky to be added to that archive, and it'll be public for anybody to see and build on.
This was a peer review process.
So we lose both of you from the high school. Who benefits from your arrival in September? Where are you going?
I'm going to the University of Michigan in the fall. And Arun, if you want to come in and-
UC Berkeley.
Got it, thank you.
And I'm going to Portugal as soon as school is in session, because I can.
Well, I'd love to just comment quickly. Vishal, you just said that the two of you are lucky or fortunate to have it published. I would say that we are all fortunate to be associated with you, and to have you representing the high school like this. I mean, to have original research published like this is incredible. This is, you know, is something that just typically doesn't happen at a high school level. And you're an amazing representation of this school and all of us, so thank you. We're fortunate to be associated with you.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if this is the right forum to say this, but we have to thank everyone along our path, and it's so great to reconnect with you after so many years. I finally connected the dots, and from CCC to here, so it's so great to talk to you again, and we should definitely reconnect soon. But it's so great to see you and talk to you, even in this kind of presentation format.
Yes, absolutely. I'll just add to that, obviously, both boys are incredibly impressive. Vishal, though, has been part of a small group of kids who meets with me three or four times a year since he was a freshman, and he is too busy for us to find a time to say goodbye, so I'm going to do it now. We've been in all these public settings and can't seem to find a place to land a private conversation, so what an influence he's been, certainly on me and my leadership here, and I think as a result, you know, the district as a whole. So you leave us a better place, Vishal, no question.
Thank you very much. It was so great to work with you for four years, and I'm sure I'll see you before-
I'm sure. Just in case, I thought I'd do it now.
Just in case, yeah, I know, we keep missing each other. It was so great to be on that advisory committee. And like Mr. Atlas said, I think your values as a superintendent definitely align with these kinds of projects and the kinds of investments that were made in him as a teacher so many years ago. And I hope that those kinds of opportunities keep opening up for teachers and for so many students like us who have benefited from the district's gracious offer in 2004. So thank you.
Thanks, Vishal. Thank you. So this brings us to our last recognition of the evening.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Arun.
Great to see you again.
Great to see you. I love it.
So this is our last meeting in our current composition, and we will soon be welcoming Tracy Morano, and that's great. But unfortunately, that does mean that Heather Bout will be leaving us, as you cycle off, though not so soon, because you will be around for the next meeting.
Yeah, I do have to join you at town meeting, and I'll be there for the next meeting, so we can finish up our-
We're not quite, we're not quite saying goodbye.
I just can't quite leave you all yet, that's the thing.
Or we can't let you go, I don't know which one it is. And I'll let some of the members who've worked with you longer, who more properly recognize your service. But I just wanted to say that honestly, your commitment to the schools, to the committee, to the community, it's just truly admirable. And I've appreciated and learned from how thoughtful and deliberate you are in everything that you do, in all of your work, and it is a lot of work that you-
For all of it.
So thank you, thank you. Court?
You're going to be sorry you said that. I have a few things to say. Heather, I'll start with thank you. When I was a new member and had training wheels on, you and other veterans were quite patient, as you were, with new members, and I thank you for that. But even though you were patient, you expected us to learn quickly, and you, I hope, leave behind a strong and capable school committee. It has to be a strong and capable school committee, because you started a great deal here, and I think we have an obligation to follow through on a number of the initiatives that you were uniquely critical to. And I would count among them a new superintendent, who is no longer a new superintendent, she's our superintendent. I look at our Spanish program, and I say, you were essential to that. I know that high school kids can sleep a little later. I think your fingerprints are on that student schedule, so thank you for that. We have a Q5 program. You were daring enough to support something that was quite out of the box, so thank you. We've referenced earlier today the STEAM lab, and how successful that has been and will continue to be. We have a new grade level configuration at the middle school. You were no small part of all of those deliberations. We've got something we call the ninth grade academy, which we think is going to strengthen the high school experience for everybody. Some of our buses are now electrified, and we can't stop now, so thank you for that. Oh, did I mention we have a new high school? We have a new high school, and that, like the middle school that you've launched as your next project, was no small undertaking. So having succeeded with the high school, now you've thrown down the gauntlet to us all with the middle school, so I hope and trust we're up to the task.
Definitely.
And I want to say that, you know, back to the idea of being a school committee member and learning how to do it, I hope that you and I share some pride in the fact that we knew how to have a good disagreement. That having diversity as something that we champion and something we celebrate is something we can use to good advantage. When we had diverse opinions, they could have divided us, and they did not. Instead, we use those diverse opinions by seeing them through to, I think, actually strengthen this school committee. And if we did, then less directly, but very much so, we strengthen the district as a whole, I hope, I hope. So, you know, thank you for modeling the way to engage with different opinions and work our way through them in a way that I think speaks very well for this school committee and this school district. I do have more to say. I will reserve some for a bit later, but I'll just give you fair warning that although Joanna Boynton, one of your friends and colleagues, is 35,000 feet in the air, she left, guess what, a poem behind.
What? I got a poem from Joanna.
You got a poem, yeah, you got the poem. But we'll wait, we'll just keep you in suspense for a minute, and instead, let me say that Bob Graham, another dear friend of yours, was in communication with me today, unhappy that he couldn't be with us here tonight, but wanted to extend his very, very best wishes, and most importantly, his thanks to you. And Sarah, I'm coming back for more later.
Wow. Well, Court, thank you for all of what you said. I mean, that's just, it means a lot, and we've worked together for three years, and there has been a lot that we've made happen and worked through, and you're right, part of the value of this whole committee is working through the different opinions, and that's how we get, that's how we get the results that we are, and thank you for all that. It means a lot.
I just want to say a few things. First of all, I think all of us appreciate the amount of time you put in over the last six years. It's incredible. This year was very unusual, but even in normal years, I don't even, I mean, it's just so much work. And so I know the community's so appreciative of that work. I cannot think of any higher praise than getting praised by Mr. Bozak the way you got it. I would just wrap that with you, because he not only represents building service workers, but the heart of our school, with students and teachers and everybody in that building. So I think that says so much more than your colleagues on the school committee can say, honestly. So I appreciate your hard work, and I ask that you get a rest.
I would like that.
And keep us on our toes. You know, we don't mind hearing from, it's much better to hear from our colleagues who are no longer sitting with us, who have a different perspective. So, and I know we'll be seeing you on the building committee, so you're not going to go too far. So again, I appreciate all of your work. As Court said, you kept us engaged and on our toes, and worked through sometimes some difficult conversations. So it's not all unicorns up here all the time.
Is it ever unicorn?
Oh, yeah. So thank you again, and I'm waiting for the poem as well.
Thank you.
I'd like to chime in and say thank you to Heather, as she's stepping down. Heather, you will be missed greatly.
Your inclusive and welcoming attitude is so greatly appreciated on my part, coming from Carlisle, and learning at a lighting speed as things happen on the region. The amount of work that gets done at the school committees, at the school committee is incredible, and just the speed that it all happens. So I really appreciate you taking your time, being inclusive, being patient, and bringing that- and bringing that institutional knowledge to the table and always looking out for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva.
I'll chime in. I'm noticing a theme here and my words are going to echo most of everyone's. I, as a new member this year, have appreciated your extraordinarily willingness to always pick up the phone for me with my myriad questions, concerns, wanting, you know, background knowledge on something. You were always there for me in ways that I really, really appreciated. I also, again, everybody knows this, you're so well networked, you're so well respected in the community with all the diverse constituencies that we as school committee members represent. And I think that that is the most admirable and aspirational part about you. And you will be missed and I hope you still pick up the phone.
Well, thank you.
You promised you'll pick up the phone.
I promise.
I have it on the record, so. I will say a few words, Heather. Yes, this is our first year we're working together as colleagues on the school committee. I have known you for the whole time I've been in Concord, five years, very, very engaged with the school committee. Your dedication is an inspiration. When you believe in something and when you believe it's right for the district, you dedicate your energy and effort to it and you make it happen. Court, you mentioned a whole host of accomplishments and I embrace and I appreciate every single one of them. One that will always stay with me and has, I think, a huge impact for years to come and has been contributed to paving the way to our DEI work. And that was, what, three, four years ago? You know, it was just when I arrived here, the school committee passed a school calendar that was more equitable than it was before. Talk about a fight, talk about a disagree.
That was an uncomfortable one.
Just thinking back, right? It was a conversation, a community conversation that took two years. A very emotionally charged theme. And you made it happen. We had a calendar that embraced everyone and made it equitable and recognized everyone instead of a few. And Dr. Hunter, you championed that effort, that first, your first year here. That topic, that's enormous. I mean, that's something you wouldn't have, as far as I'm concerned. And you facilitated the conversation in the second year, round two. And what you had done was not, had not been done before and it was really instrumental in getting to the consensus that we got to, two years into the conversation. So I recognize that and I thank you, Heather, and I thank you, Dr. Hunter, for that. And I will call you, yes, you said you would, so.
I promise. Call anytime. See, it'll be easier to pick up the phone now because then I don't have to come and present whatever it is in public and I can just chat with you all. But thank you. That was an important initiative that we took on and your support was important and Lori's leadership in it was critical.
Sorry, that's right.
I don't know, I've, you know, it's been four years of working together and almost the six months, you know, the minute you're appointed, the job is yours, even if you think you're still working somewhere else. You know, it's really been four and a half years and yes, I inherited some challenges, to say the least. And Heather's just been a rock of support, an eternal optimist, almost annoyingly sometimes. Neither, sometimes I'd have to push back and she still talked me into a better place, so. I don't know, almost out of words, it's been such an extensive time together and, you know, so much has happened. And it's just your support and your membership on this committee and the time and energy you put in absolutely makes an incredible impact on all of the kids and there's just no question of that. You're leaving us in a better place and hopefully that was the goal.
That was, thank you. That means a lot. If I could have been a part of leaving this in a better place, that's all, that's what it was all about.
All right, we're gonna cue Joanna, am I right?
Sure.
Is that okay, Sarah? Then you can follow. So I haven't rehearsed this, just received it. She's been composing it today. Her instructions to me are, go slowly and it should rhyme. Here we go. "In honor of Heather, I write this poem. When it is red, I will be gone. On a trip down south, so it's up to court, I can only hope he's the rhyming sort." "Heather and I served on the SC for years. We shared many laughs and even some tears. As you know, that this job is not for the weak and Heather is one who is not afraid to speak. We worked on tough things, holidays and contracts. Heather always careful to clarify the facts. She is quick to compliment and cares very much. When you are in need, she is clutch. She will always help, is tireless in her work, offers her time and is never a jerk. She has devoted years to a new middle school, working with everyone, always keeping her cool. I think when she started, she wasn't quite aware of the scrutiny a school committee member could bear. But she put her head down, no task too tall. She is cheery and upbeat, always has kudos for all. Thank you, Heather, for your service to the schools. You are not one who ever suffers fools. What you have given cannot be measured. It will be all of our loss when your time is severed. But lucky you, after six long years, you'll be home for bedtime. Your kids will all cheer. You'll enjoy fewer forums and more long walks and the topics of school will eventually no longer be talked. Enjoy the time with your family. You have earned it, no doubt. And in the coming silence, I'm sure you won't pout. From the few of us who know what in this job you do, a massive humongous toast to you." Joanna Boynton.
Wow, I am amazed. I can't wait to reach out to her. My goodness, I'm kind of overwhelmed, guys. Thank you. Can I respond for a minute?
Should we give her one minute?
One minute, yeah. Clock now or? Wow, man. My gosh, thank you. You know, as I try to think of something to say, part of it is, oh my gosh, you know, we just chosen some teachers who taught for 30 years. I only did this for six. This doesn't seem right. So am I there compared to what they all did? But I really appreciate it too. I appreciate so much all of you guys and working with you. You know, there is, and that really is, that's so much of what this has been to me, is the people. And I'm so grateful for all the people that have been a part of this experience. Those you named, those in front of me, and administration and teachers and all the town committee members and officials that we've worked with and the whole community. I mean, this has been all about people and we've accomplished so much and I've learned so much from all of you and all the people I've worked with and that's, that's just really valuable to me. And to hear you guys say those nice things about me means a lot because you're people who I respect so much and so it carries a lot of weight. And I will say, you know, to your point, Court, sometimes one of the most gratifying team to work with can be one that starts with a myriad of viewpoints and opinions because it's when you then come together that you find that power. And I love, you know, it means a lot. For instance, Joanna had such good things to say. For those who weren't watching in our first few days, Joanna and I disagreed on a lot. But we also came into step and rode together and didn't always agree. And that was the same for so many, you know, each, each year of committee is different and has different dynamics. And we always have so many disagreements, as we should, and yet when you come together and can work together like that, it means a lot. So, thank you. And I will say that the relationships are the most fulfilling thing of all this. And I will also say that the crowning achievement of the school committee over the past several years, I do feel, has been our hiring of Dr. Hunter. And it was such a broad-based collaborative process and the community chose well. And so, Dr. Hunter, thank you for helping us to take this district in a new direction and get us really moving together and rowing together and sailing along in the right direction. So a great appreciation for you and the whole team that you've built because you've built an incredible team around you and the administrators, as well as the teachers, everyone down through, but your team is strong and captaining this ship. And I feel that I am leaving you all in a very good place. And so, if anything, if I fall in the steps of those who've said, done this before me, who often left us with parting directions and inspirational words, and I don't know if I can come up with those, but I would just say, let's steward this amazing team and administration because they are fabulous and we are so lucky here. And that's what I'd leave you with. But I have one more small thing because I wish I could have done it in person, but I have a little parting gift for you, Lori, because I just couldn't resist. And it's based on a small story that I will share with everyone. You'll know it, but I'll share it with everyone else. It was in Lori's first year, I think. And she was visiting a classroom, I'm pretty sure it's at Willard, either kindergarten or first grade classroom. And the teacher wrote "Dr. Hunter" on the board and "Superintendent." And she said to the kids, "Okay, can anybody tell me what this says?" And one of the kids looked up and said, "Superhero." And we all said, "Well, that's perfect. That's what she is. She's our superhero of schools." And so I know you already have your nameplate on your desk that says Superintendent of Schools, but I thought this one would be a little more appropriate, so I got you a nameplate. Superhero of schools. Because I think everybody just needs to know that that's what you are, really.
Oh, that's great. And mutually, we have a jacket for you that's become our tradition. We will have it for you at town meeting. Lack of in-person takes away the whole.
I know.
But we will have it on Sunday.
Wonderful. I'll trade you for a nameplate. Anyway, you guys have just been so wonderful to work with and I respect you all so much and thank you for all the nice things you've said. I really appreciate it. It means a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We do still have a bit of work.
We have a meeting to run.
No reason to go anywhere, although I do want to check in because I am very well aware that the Concord colleagues have all been here longer than Eva and I have been. We still have a discussion of school improvement plan, a check-in about the meeting schedule, filtering software, policies and four action items. Would this be a good time to take a three, five-minute break if anyone wants it?
If I make one request, Mr. Mistrullo's been waiting. Do we mind doing his presentation first and then taking a break?
If that's okay with everybody, that'd be.
Agreed.
Is that okay with Heather?
Anything for you, Mike.
Well, ironically, I also wrote Heather a poem, so what are the chances? But here we go. "My experience with Heather is like a day of sunny weather. Heather made the school community better. Heather is clever. Now she cuts her tether, we're all indebted." Not bad for five minutes of prep. I mean, I will never be a Johanna, that's for sure. And I have so many things to give to Heather. I know that you're all pressed for time. I will be, I will be brief. I will say, I now owe you an additional debt because now that we've said that I am the only thing in the way of a break. But in all seriousness, Heather, thank you for all your support. You've been so kind. You're a champion for kids. And I often wondered if that positive attitude would just permeated every aspect of your life and hearing what Lori said, that you're positive to annoyance. If that's even possible, but you know, being optimistic, enthusiastic and positive, that's really critical. And you've just been a great champion for kids and for me, so thank you for all that.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
All right, the school improvement plan, it is in draft form. I will be brief. You will see that there's a lot of common threads from last year and for good reason. I think you, you know, this is not everything that the high school is going to do in a given year. However, it is important that our initiatives are of substance, they're big. And what that means, they often are multiple years and they should be. And so goal number one is about ninth grade academy. I could close with this one because when we look at a really challenging 18 months, there was a lot of work that went into planning ninth grade academy and there was an argument we made, a legitimate one of like, should we just not do this and shelve this? And the fear was, I did not want to do that. And the fear was if we shelved it, we would never have an opportunity to revive it. And so we did peer it back, but we did continue the work. And I will say that there's a lot of things we could point at that went really well. It was definitely management this year in many respects in terms of the school. But this initiative was a bright spot, a very positive experience. Is it perfect? No. Do ninth graders sometimes complain? Of course. They don't even know what they're complaining about sometimes because they have nothing to compare it to. With that being said, there are some legitimate things that we'll get feedback on that we can improve, but by and large, it's just been a tremendous experience. And it's all due to the credit is to the team leaders and the teachers for making it happen. You know, when we talk about transitioning to high school, all years of high school are important. The ninth grade year is arguably the most important. If things are not, if there's not a strong foundation, if we do not onboard in a very thoughtful way, it's going to be really hard to be successful in high school. And that's not only academically, it really is about having kids comfortable when they walk in here. And if they're not comfortable, it's really challenging to come to a big high school, particularly if you're coming from, we're drawing from three different communities, as you know. We're putting everybody together. It's a critical year in development and so just having this opportunity for teachers to collaborate together and really some of the things that I pulled from just the conversations is that every one of the teachers to a person said, "I knew my kids better sooner because of ninth grade academy." And that's because there was planned meetings where they could collaborate and they could just talk about kids, see patterns of kids, what's working in a class in general and also just patterns of what is, is where kids are struggling. And if they're having success, if one individual, if Mike is having success in science but not in math, you know, what are some of the themes that we can try to make it where someone could be successful? But knowing kids and knowing them really well. And so really, year two is about seeing this process through and, you know, utilizing some of the new ideas. We use it a little bit like an incubator. And so we had four teams and we encouraged them to try new things. And not every team was going to try the same thing, but we would come back and talk about, okay, what worked and what didn't work. And so there are some things that we've learned about, just about checking little things too, check-ins with kids. You know, Ray Pavlov did a great job of just doing formal, you know, informal check-ins to see how kids are doing, that they could answer on an app saying, okay, so how are you feeling on a scale of one to 10 today? And it would allow for prompter conversation. And then I have Teresa Roggerio, who is one of the four team leaders, who is just remarkable. I mean, really the, kind of the leader of that group and has been just tremendous with communication with, between teachers and parents and Wilkamazer and Ben Kendall also. So overall, it's just been a tremendous experience. And I think one area we'd like to improve next year is just an RTI, which leads me, you know, dovetails nicely into the second one, which is RTI and tiered levels of support. We will next year continue to administer three universal screeners to ninth graders with the STAR 360. It gives us some real-time data immediately to see, okay, how are they doing socially, emotionally? How are they doing in math? How are they doing in English? And it allows us to look at where they're supposed to be for a ninth grader in September. What reading level are they at? What, how are they performing in math in terms of a grade level? It's a really great tool to utilize. And where I think we have room for improvement is, in a high school schedule, it's really challenging to find very specific places where we can then administer some of our, you know, our RTI in our small group setting to backfill some gaps. to backfill some gaps and to make sure that they can be successful in class. And so, really, it's trying to find, really, from a scheduling perspective, where it can work. And oftentimes, when we find where it can work from a scheduling perspective, then we have to convince both student and family. The family is usually the easy part. Students sometimes is the hard part. And the reason is, they're happy with their schedule. And yes, they recognize there might be some areas for improvement. And so, we're, we're trying to schedule them before they walk in the door and use eighth-grade data to, to do that. But, you know, we, Kristen was really instrumental in bringing RTI to the high school level. It's not really associated often at the high school level. And I think we've, we've, we're now entering, what year? Next year will be year three, I believe. Definitely could improve, but I think the framework and the structure is there. Really excited to continue that work. It's really about helping struggling learners and not using just testing or special ed as a, as, as the, the backstop. You know, things aren't working, therefore, they should be, they should be tested. Are there ways for us to backfill some of the gaps and, and make sure they are being, they're successful in class? Goal three dovetails really well with, with all of it, which is just using feedback from students, from staff, from the community to improve. And, and I think re-engaging with challenge success makes, makes a lot of sense. You know, we were still practicing a lot of challenge-success kind of ideas and themes, but re-engaging with them, I think, is a good idea. Very grateful for the Concord End Fund for making that happen. And I think pulling out some of the things that went well during the pandemic that we can now utilize going forward. And then also, it's going to be really nice to be able to use the data comparing how people were feeling at this time. You know, not post-pandemic, but, you know, as we waddle through the pandemic, and then maybe a year from now. And maybe things are a little brighter in comparing that data. But really important to make sure that we're getting feedback and not working in a very small silo, whether that's leadership team at the high school, which is a great group, but still, it's only, you know, 12 members of the district leadership team, that we're getting feedback from everybody, and particularly students and staff and community members. And then, goal four, it's about, you know, it's continuing the great work of the district, creating a collaborative, inclusive culture at CCHS. And, you know, really proud of some of the initials, initiatives here. Some led by students, whether that's Charm, Charge, or, or, or BSU Club. Others just led by, you know, Kristen under the leadership of, of Dr. Hunter, and just full examination of our, our curriculum. Make sure it's culturally responsive. And just make sure that we keep this at the forefront of the work that we do. And, you know, we've talked often about diversifying the staff. And, you know, there are thousands of highly qualified educators of color that are capable to thrive here and will add to this community. And it's our job to be really proactive in finding them, and we've had success. And it's really important that they recognize that, A, we, we, we wanted to diversify the staff, but what we're looking for is what we know is out there, which are thousands of highly qualified individuals to fill these jobs. And we're really lucky that we've been recruiting and finding some tremendous educators that I think are just going to add to the environment here. And thrilled about Andrew's position. Thrilled about having the new Metco director and an opportunity to spend some time with her recently. And just really continuing this, this work. These, these goals are certainly not in order of importance. If they were, goal four is number one. But just really excited about the team we have here at the high school. I, I have Brian Miller and Katie Stahl, my, my two closest counterparts. And, you know, can't say enough about their work, tireless. And had an opportunity to thank them for their efforts at the graduation. It is, it's warranted. And a lot of what they do is similar to what you all do, which is unseen, but really important. And the, you know, the hours these individuals, individuals are putting in is, it's bordering on untenable, but there's light at the end of the tunnel. All right. Time for a break, everybody. Great. Great. Thank you.
Mike, thank, thank you very much. So, I, I thought it was very nice just to focus on what you were saying. Often, we have to look at slides. Here, I was just focusing on the content that, that I was getting as you spoke. And it was, was very useful. So, thank you. A question that comes back to the, the school community and the parent community. If indeed, all of the K-12 school improvement plans are going to get more attention from advisory committees, what, what happens over the summer at the high school in terms of the transition as you close down one year in one committee and then convene another one? Do we lose a lot of time in the fall, or is there traction this year? It's not a leading question. I really don't know.
Yeah, no, it's a fair question. For the most part, people will serve two-year terms, and it really depends when they hopped on and if they have kids still there in the district. They would certainly be welcoming even if they didn't. But oftentimes, you know, parents are ready to, to move on when that happens. I will say that, of course, we will discuss school improvement plan. It is part of that process and outlined by the law. I would say that the focal point of, of, of the school advisory council often isn't about, you know, budget, which is also part of that process, or school improvement plan. And not to suggest it's not part of the discussion, but it's really about the 30,000-foot view and not getting deep into the details about how we're implementing RTI. It would be more discussion, how are we helping struggling learners? So, yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
It's not a compliment. A lot of what you have said. I, I, I know a good number of, of, of students in the ninth-grade academy, and it is a success. It is a success. And, and it's not the full picture. It's only part of what you, you had planned. And yes, I, I think it's, I think it's perfect. But you know why it's perfect, what your, what your dog tells you, you know, every day from your commencement speech on Saturday. Listen to your dog. It's because, because it's the leadership. The leadership is great, is, is, is amazing. And what I will say is that, yes, the, the teachers get to know their students. And what I, what I, what I like about, about this is that they'll reach out, they'll call the families, not to tell them their child is struggling. They'll reach out to say how well the child is doing. And that's very refreshing to take the time to, yes, to, to note that some, something is, is going well. RTI is, is, I think it's a very good solution to reach some of our wested recommendations. You are, it's a, it's a middle way before testing, before special needs. So, a lot of the problems can be addressed there. So, I, I think it's a, it's a brilliant idea. And I just want to commend you and, and the staff for doing such, such a wonderful job. And if I could just tell an anecdote to just remember, remind Dr. Hunter and you that I had a son in high school for maybe two years before I knew who you were, right? And that says that, you know, it was working. I never had to call you. I never knew. I never had to know you. So, and that, that said a lot. That said a great deal. So, thank you.
Well, I, I really appreciate the kind words, and thank you very much. And it's, you know, I am looking forward to, you, you kind of alluded to it, that, you know, we, we, it was a, a version where we couldn't do everything we wanted to do. What I'm really looking forward to is more interdisciplinary learning and more opportunities for kids to work in the field together on a project that will, that's academically focused, but also, you know, is really talking, getting at some of these themes, whether it's cultural competency, whether it's an environmental initiative, whatever it may be. But, but I think that those will be some great experiences, too. So, thank you for the kind words, though.
I'll use this excuse one more time to say something, because I won't be able to comment on this in the, in the fall. But like I said earlier, the, well, I guess I should start with the fact that I'm obviously not as quick as you, Mike, because I have not come up with a poem to share the accolades about this improvement plan yet. I'll work on that for next time. But I do just want to say that the vision that you have and the care for your high school community, and that starts with students, but it so clearly extends to staff and the whole community and families even, is, it's a visceral feeling in, in this plan and how you lead the school. And that is just so valuable to all of us. And so, again, at a very high level, thank you so much for your vision and care for these students and for the whole community. It, it means a lot, and it, it carries us in what we do.
Thank you, Heather. You're always very kind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike, have a good summer.
Yep.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for everything.
Take some time off. See you in the fall.
Bye, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay. Would, would everyone like a little, let's see, it's 7:42? Quick break, or?
Yeah, yeah. I would only ask, Kristen's waiting, too. What, what, what are we making Kristen wait for?
Kristen's going to be here through our meetings going forward.
Oh, great. Yay!
Kristen's along for the ride.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we weren't making you wait an extra five minutes for something.
Now she gets to enjoy the whole thing from now on.
All right.
Think everything else is, is us. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Five minutes. It's 7:42, so 7:47.
Okay.
Okay.
The opportunity this evening is great to present to you. And like as everyone else said, thanks for all your work over this tough school year. It's an honor to have your signatures on our diploma. And I was so, so glad to be able to come in during Heather's last meeting. So, it was great to, great to cross paths with you again. But thanks again for everything.
It really, it's so much.
Thank you. Have a great summer. Bye.
Welcome back. Hello.
Hi.
Welcome back to the Joint Concord Carlisle Concord School Committees June 8th meeting. This meeting is being recorded. We are back for an end to Item 11 Discussion. And we have the 2021-2022 School Committee Meeting Schedule. Has everybody had a chance to look at the meeting schedule?
I have.
Okay. And everybody's okay?
I have one request, if I may. July 19th happens to be a holiday, a three-day holiday. And I wonder whether we can move that one. It starts on the 19th.
19th, 20th, 21st. Okay, we'll, we'll do to poll out for alternatives in the summer?
Wait, I thought the meeting was the 20th.
Yes, but it's a, it's a, I doubt.
Oh, 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 sorry.
A three-day, a three-day holiday.
Yeah, good, good call.
Okay, we can, yeah, we can doodle that one.
Yeah, I checked the other ones. They work out fine.
Okay.
I didn't even know they were negotiable. I put them in my calendar.
If you, if something doesn't work, let us know.
Okay, I'll make it work.
Okay.
Just a quick question, Sarah. Okay, Sean, are we still allowed to zoom in or what? What are the changes?
We don't know yet what the protocols are going to be.
No, the the governor extended his
Yeah, they haven't, I think they haven't voted on it. There's like, the governor extended, but it hasn't been endorsed.
The legislators have to go through.
Yeah.
So technically, unless that happens, it's going to expire the 15th. I think you're fine on the 15th. So we have to keep an eye on that as we get into July.
Yeah, and I think that that extension was going to go through the end of summer, like through September 1 or something like that, right? And then I don't know more forward.
Additional legislation to extend it, but who knows what's gonna happen with that?
Yeah.
So we we are going to try to keep to our Tuesday, though. So it's the 13th of the 27th?
Summer, we don't have to be wedded to the Tuesday. I think we can just do whatever works. But Tuesday is our first default.
Right. If we can't zoom in, I won't be here on the 13th if you're, you know, all dying to see me.
I'm not available the 13th either. I'm on the superintendent's conference.
We'll doodle this.
Sorry, I am sorry.
Yeah. And then everyone can take a minute to look at their calendars and figure out where they are when. Okay. So then we're on to old business filtering software. We have, of course, discussed this in a few other meetings. Happy to report that Dr. Hunter is coming here with a recommendation for a pilot program, correct?
Yes, and I will do a delivery in the best layperson terms I can, so those of you who know this better, please feel free to jump in. Our recommendation is to restrict the apps for grade six to 12 on their individual laptops and do a pilot of the filtering when they're at home with grade six, which is the more restrictive and the one that comes with the cost of $4 to $5 per student. The app, the app limits are free, as you heard at the last meeting, so that seems like a reasonable starting point. It would certainly, I would expect, have some impact and give us some wiggle room to give it a try at the more most restrictive level, and it seemed to make sense to us to start with the kids who are just getting their laptops.
Okay.
And Cindy, I believe you've prepared a motion.
Right, I'll take a, I'll take a stab. So that the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees vote to approve MacBook application restrictions for the 21-22 academic year for grade six through 12. The district's IT department will restrict non-school required applications and only allow installation of school-approved applications. Furthermore, for the 21-22 academic year, Concord Middle School Grade Six will pilot an off-prem web filtering application for the student MacBooks. The filtering software would be based on the same rules as the district's on-premise firewall. Did I get it?
Thank you. I wouldn't have done it that well. Very nice.
Do we need to see it? Anybody who need to see it? All right, and that was a proposed motion, was it not, Cynthia?
Yeah, and I'll I'll send it to you so Erin has it, so she doesn't have to.
Great.
I I I would so move.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, just a reminder, the pilot is a one-year that you're proposing, Cynthia. I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Correct.
Uh, roll call.
Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
Out I for both.
Miss that I for both.
Sofia I for region.
Rainey I for both.
And Wilson for region. Thank you.
Thank Peter Kelly on our behalf, and thank you, everyone, for looking into this and discussing it. Thank you.
And now Fatima, on to you with school committee policies. Second, we have second readings here before us.
Okay, so yes, we bring back the policies we brought to you last time. These are still the policies we discussed in our April 28 meeting, and they were, again, just cleaning up some language, adding, adding legal references. So let's see. I know J J G, we replaced appropriate administrator with building principal, just to be specific, and we removed J J dash E because it's it's already there under J J. And then said the others, we cleaned up the language that some of us were not comfortable with, and we had two options for J J I B last time, and we agreed on one. I don't know if I'm leaving out anything, or are there any questions?
No, I think we we were, had pretty decent consensus at the end of our last meeting. These are all ready to be voted on. Good.
Great. So do you need a a motion?
Um, I think we do that during the action items.
Oh, you're right. You're right. Sorry.
Has its own item there. But if there's no more, no more questions or anything about this, I think we are ready to go on to action items.
I I wonder if I could ask one question about student organizations of the superintendent. It reads, "In addition to the above requirements, all clubs or organizations at the high school level will relate to subject matter covered by the curriculum." Could that prove too narrow? Does it need to perhaps be more expansive? Covered by or included within the school goals or could could this prove troublesome?
I think I see why you ask, especially since we you've become very exposed to the wide breadth of of clubs and organizations going on. I don't think there's any harm in adding, if you want to amend that a little and add something a little broader to it. I I'd leave curriculum because that's, I think, the core of many of the organizations.
I apologize to you all for bringing it to you at this late date. It's just coming up for me now. I'm sorry. Any thinking about that?
I like Laurie suggesting adding another, and not taking it out, but maybe saying curriculum or you know, goals.
Or stand in alignment with the district's strategic goals.
That sounds good, broad enough for student interests.
Or stand in alignment with school goals.
I would say school goals, especially with the work that we're doing on the curriculum with DEI. I think the goals would be inclusive of that. Think I'd be more comfortable with that as well.
With the with in alignment with the school goals to do, is that what you'd think? Yeah.
Nice catch, Court.
Well, I just don't want the principal, you know, tying himself in knots, figuring out which curriculum thread here and which curriculum thread there.
I agree.
Yep. Okay.
So do we need, who actually made the motion? Do you want to withdraw it and then we can make a a motion as amended?
Uh, we're still at discussion. I don't think we have a motion on the floor.
I am moving us forward beyond this.
Keep it.
You're moving us to the last vote.
I think I'm ready to move on.
Can't wait to get to executive session.
Exactly.
Sorry. Okay, so then we would amend J J A to have the 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 final clause of the first sentence in the final paragraph to read, "In addition to the above requirements, all clubs or organizations at the high school level will relate to subject matter covered by the curriculum or stand in alignment with school goals."
Can we use the terminology mission?
Mission?
It should say districts' mission, not the school.
Oh, I thought Fatima in court liked school better.
Uh, yeah, well, we're getting better. Remember that that different opinions that are working for us here. I think Cynthia is right. And it has to get repeated in the in the sec in the next sentence that again refers to curriculum. I'd be, I'd be very happy with district, district's mission.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so and then the second paragraph would read, "The principal is responsible." What?
Yeah, go ahead.
So then the second sentence would also be amended to conclude with, "The principal is responsible for determining that the purpose of a student organization is related to the curriculum or district's mission."
And we could debate whether it's or and or, but I don't care. Either way, I think it gives us the it gives us latitude that's appropriate and necessary.
Yeah, generally, the curriculum is inclusive of the goals, right? Like, so.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be hard. I just don't want the the fussing to be too too granular.
Do you want to make it and slash or?
Perfect. Laurie, are you writing this down, or do you want me to send them to you for Erin?
I am, but let's send them anyway so we can double check.
Okay. We're good on policies. Can we still vote on this this evening, even though we amended it?
If you all agree that to it, yes.
Good. Great, thank you to the policy team. It's great, great that we're wrapping that up. Okay, so action items. The first one, vote to approve non-union salary increases. Is there a motion?
I move that the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees vote to approve fiscal '22 salary increases of 3.25% for non-union employees.
Second. Okay, discussion?
I would just share appreciation with all of our non-union employees and say that hopefully this can be seen as a sign of our support and appreciation for all that they have done during the pandemic and onward. Huge appreciation.
Really? Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Anderson, I.
Who's I?
Out I for both.
Wait, question? Yeah, are we supposed to be doing for both?
Right, you are. Forgive us. Yeah.
Oh, it is for both. I'm thinking.
It's for both, yeah.
Yeah, okay, start again. Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
Out I for both.
I for both. Rainey I for both?
Sofia I for region.
And Wilson for region. Motion passes. Thank you. Vote to approve central administrator title changes.
I would love to move that the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committee vote to approve central administrator title changes, that of Kristen Herbert to Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and that of Jared Stanton to Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations.
Discussion? Oh, second, sorry.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I again would love to just briefly voice appreciation and support for these two who are such a core piece of the backbone of our district, and Kristen and Jared, we could never do everything that we do without you, and and I thank you mostly for supporting Laurie so well because we want to help her to keep doing everything she's doing and help keep the district moving forward. So this is about structure as well as you, but thank you both.
I think that the vote is a direct reference to our confidence in you. I do believe that by elevating the positions to superintendent or in this case assistant, it not only elevates the title, it elevates the expectations. And although it might be in part referencing the the capabilities that you've shown in the past and the accomplishments that you've helped the district achieve, I think we have really set the bar higher, and I hope that's going to be an inspiring move on this school committee's half that comes back to us in the form of really clear aspirations that you think you can help us achieve. The the school district has the people and the other resources to really, really distinguish ourselves even more than we have thus far. And so we're really putting that charge your way with this with this elevation, and we hope that you enthusiastically embrace it, and we hope that you help us understand more fully in the coming months what you think this will help us make possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Thank you, Jared.
I just want to add a few words, just a few.
Yeah.
Yeah, as we emerge somewhat from the pandemic, I think a lot of the work we put to the side over the last last long year and a half, I would say, now we can begin, I think, to do the work that we had to put aside, and you two are an integral part of that work. So we're gonna have to have very clear plans and expectations across the districts as to how we're going to move forward. So thank you.
Roll call.
Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
Out I for both.
Miss that I for both.
Sofia I for region.
Rainey I for both.
And Wilson for region.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to us.
We have a lot to see. Okay, um, a vote to approve the bus driver's contract. Who would like to bring this one forward?
Happy to, but I wasn't a part of it. I feel like somebody who was a part of it should be able to.
This is one Jared did. Because it's a one-year extension.
That's why I was looking around. I couldn't.
None of you were directly involved because it's it was just the one-year extension.
To the point of relying on Jared.
Yes, and thank you to them. Thank you to the bus drivers for for agreeing to a one-year, but.
So I'll read this. I'll read the memo that was from Dr. Hunter to us. It's the MTA Bus Drivers Unit and School Committee. Negotiating team have agreed to a one-year agreement, including a 2.25% increase to the salary schedule in year one. I recommend the Concord Public School Committee and Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee vote to the MTA Bus Drivers Unit one-year agreement with the following motions. So I first will move that the Concord Public School Committee vote to approve the MTA Bus Drivers Unit one-year agreement for FY '22. I guess we have to do these separately, so that's just for Concord.
Second. And I'd like to say that any parent putting a five-year-old on a bus for the first time understands, if they never did before, the the critical importance of our transportation workers. To put to put a kid on a bus is a move that puts your heart in your mouth, or whatever the saying is. You know, it's a pretty, pretty poignant and could be a scary moment, and we've made that not so scary in this district. We've got a really superb team. You know, as as you know, I I did some driver education with students over the years. Our little saying, I think, applies to bus drivers. Our, our little saying, I think, applies to bus drivers. You're only good, you're only as good as your next drive. It is a daunting job, not to be underestimated. So thank you to our transportation folks.
And we're really lucky to have our in-house bus service, which we can use not only to transport our students back and forth to school, but use in a variety of other ways. And it gives us a great deal of flexibility to have great programs. And I just think we're so very lucky to have both districts with a great transportation team.
Agreed.
Are we ready to roll call?
And. Yeah, I can't call this one.
Court, this one's yours.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please, for Concord.
Anderson, I.
Who's I?
About I.
Is that I?
Rainey, I.
And it passes, thank you very much.
Oops, sorry. And I will move that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee vote to approve the MTA Bus Drivers Unit one-year agreement for FY '22.
Second.
Anderson, I.
Who's I?
About I.
Is that I?
Mustafi, I for region.
Brady, I.
And Wilson, I. Thank you. And that brings us to a vote to approve the school committee policies.
Why don't I just keep going? I will move that the Concord Carlisle, Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees vote to approve school committee policies filed JJ co-curricular and extracurricular activities, filed J J E co-curricular and extracurricular, oh, oh, sorry. That one, that one's removed.
That one is as amended, I think, right?
Well, no, we're gonna.
Remove the next one.
We're gonna vote on removing it all, so.
Correct.
Right, so that J J E is to be removed, that filed J J A student organizations.
As amended.
As amended in this meeting. File J J E student fundraising activities, file J J G contests for students, and file J J I B interclassical athletics.
Second.
Discussion?
There's final motion.
That's right. Oh, my goodness.
Oh, my goodness.
So exciting. And I should have let Fatima do it because she's led this policy, this, this subcommittee throughout the policies. So my only comment would be my thanks to the policy subcommittee. I know you guys have spent a lot of time on these.
I wish we could count here, you know, there's a thousand shot, I don't know.
You read it, Heather is my parting gift to you.
Yeah, okay, like, thank you.
Not to it, so thank you for doing that.
Sure.
Okay, a roll call.
Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
About I for both.
That I for both.
Mustafi, I for region.
Rainey, I for both?
And Wilson for region. The motion passes. And that, well, we still have one more, one, one more action item, which is a move to executive session.
There we go.
If we can, if we can call on you one last time, Heather.
Because I'm, because I've practiced this one so much. I will move that the Concord School Committee and Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee enter into executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law to conduct strategy sessions with all non-union personnel, and purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, with collective bargaining units, Concord Teachers Association, Concord Carlisle Teachers Association, Local 1703, State Council 93, AFL-CIO-CCHS Building Service Workers and Maintenance, and not to return to open session.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Anderson, I both.
Who's I for both?
About I for both.
Is that I for both?
Mustafi, I for region.
Rainey, I for both?
Wilson for region. See you all there.
Thanks to those who made it with us. Long haul. Thank you again, Jim.
Good night, all.
Bye.